All right, we're going to call to order the July 18th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment, Accessor Agency, and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by, hmm, this should be the easiest decision of the night. Oh, our new city manager, Aaron Laurel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the Police Managers Association, and no action was taken. That brings us into item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. As is noted on our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from taking action or having an extensive discussion about items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. For folks that wish to speak to this or any other item this evening, we do ask that you fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item is currently under consideration. We take the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the council questions, the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests forms. So if you're hearing a particular item for later in the agenda, be sure to grab a card and turn it in as soon as you possibly can. We also recognize that for some folks speaking in public can anxiety-inducing, so we ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even applause or other demonstrations, we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A. The first is by Michelle Clark of the Yolo Land Trust. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Baldwin and council members. My name is Michelle Clark. I am the Executive Director of the Yolo Land Trust. The Yolo Land Trust has a simple and vital mission: to permanently preserve farmland and rangeland.
I don't see the green light at the base of the microphone. In front of you, there's a little tiny tab at the base of the microphone.
There it is.
There you go.
All right. Do you want me to start from the beginning?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Michelle Clark. I am the Executive Director of the Yolo Land Trust. The Yolo Land Trust is a nonprofit organization with a simple and vital mission: we work to permanently conserve farmland and rangeland in Yolo County. We've been doing this for 30 years, and the way we do it is we work with willing landowners who want to enter into a private contract with us to permanently restrict their farm or ranches for agriculture. That contract is recorded, and it becomes a deed restriction on the property. The legal name for that contract is a conservation easement. Whenever that farm or ranch is sold, the next owners are required to abide by the same terms, and so it's kept in farming or ranching into perpetuity. We have over 65 of these conservation easements scattered throughout the county for over 11,000 acres, so that area will always remain in farming. I'm working on a small project with West Sacramento with Paul Dirksen, a mitigation project for your flood control big project. But the reason I'm here tonight, besides introducing myself, is to invite you all to our big community event called A Day in the Country. We've been doing this for 29 years. It is the best farm-to-fork event in all of the county, if I do say so myself, and it's pretty unique in that we bring 20 of the top chefs from Northern California to Yolo County. We provide all of the food for them to make their dishes. Everything is volunteer, all the chefs volunteer their time. We have the top chefs from, as I said, Northern California, Patrick Mulvaney, the Executive Chef of Beba. We have top chefs from the Bay Area, Chez Panis, Bull Valley Roadhouse. We're gathering up quite a list. We have 14 wineries and breweries, and this year, we move it around every year, but this year it's in Clarksburg at the Harringer Family Estates. This is the family home of Papa Steve Harringer, and it is, we are really looking forward to having our event there. Steve, at our event last year, volunteered his place. He comes every year. So they just, if you haven't seen, they just rebuilt their barn. It's absolutely spectacular, it's their new tasting room. We mailed to each of you our invitation, and I bought some extra copies, which I'll leave with the clerk. We would love to have you come down. It is the second Sunday in September, September 9th, from 3:00 to 6:00. The public is invited, but you have to have a ticket, and if you wish to purchase a ticket, our website is THE, T-H-E, theyolalandtrust.org. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If it weren't for the THE part, you would be right within three minutes, but that was pretty good. Thanks for coming. The Day in the Country, I've been before, it's a fantastic, I know several members of the council and our team have as well. It's a fantastic, it's really extraordinary, and it's great to see it coming to East Yolo and Clarksburg, so hopefully we'll see everyone there. Thanks so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Pat Flint.
I think this thing needs a little oil. Thank you, council members and mayor. I am asking that you rescind the vote and application of the Reclamation District's RD 900 and 537. I have yet to receive my PRA information regarding communications with the Reclamation Districts, LAFCO, and the City of West Sacramento. It is a violation of the law to restrict my right to public records. I know this information is being withheld on purpose due to the upcoming elections. You are in contempt. You also violated the public meeting laws when you requested a closed session, in my opinion, during the discussion of the RD 900 takeover. For these two reasons alone, I believe you should rescind the RD 900 537 takeover agreement and application. Thank you, your vote especially.
All right, with that, then, we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is Council Communications and Reports. Are there any this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolo Salon Air Quality Management District met on July 11th. We heard a review of the Bus and Truck Regulation update. We also looked at a proposed admission rule pertaining to graphic arts printing operations in the district. Really, there's only 12 of those businesses that are impacted. We also had a season review of the Particular Matter 2.5, which is a very small particle that can potentially have harmful health effects. We did have some, a number of exceedance days during the last year, mostly due to the heat and the fires. The Yolo County Housing Authority also met on July 11th. There, we heard a review of the Smoke-Free Housing Policy. We also authorized the organization to apply for a rental assistance program, a demonstration program, which is a program through HUD. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johansson. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Water Resources Association of Yolo County Board met on June 18th. In the absence of a quorum, we heard a legislative briefing. We heard that the Northern California Water Association supports increased state funding for Sacramento Valley flood protection infrastructure, which, of course, would benefit West Sacramento. The Yolo Sub Basin Groundwater Agency Board, which I chair, also met on June 18th, and we took up several administrative items such as approving budget adjustments and adopting a policy on cash reserves. And we also continued our primary focus, which is our work developing the groundwater sustainability plan for Yolo County. On June 21st, the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met, and we renewed our general liability insurance policy, and we approved midterm budget adjustments, and we also heard updates on the South Port project. And I was able to tour, actually tour, the levee project on June 15th. And then earlier tonight, the Port Commission met, and we approved an MOU with Armbrust Aviation Group for potential development of a fuel storage facility at North Terminal in the port. That's my report, thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to join city staff and members of our community at the Memorial Park Open House on July 10th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Impressed with the community turnout, but more impressed with the staff and how they organized several different stations to talk about all of the improvements that we're going to realize at Memorial Park. I had an opportunity to visit almost all of them and saw some of the layouts, the maps, and the solicitation of community feedback through questionnaires and feedback forms. So I want to commend Cindy Tuttle and your whole operation for the staff. I mean, it was a very hot day, and I'm sure it was very inconvenient to be out there in the sun. However, I thought it flowed very, very well, and it was a wonderful opportunity for members of our community, ask questions directly of staff, and for staff to obtain the direct feedback from members of the community, both of whom, all of whom want to see Memorial Park improvements happen in some way. In addition, the Yolo County Children's Alliance is currently conducting a school supply and backpack drive for members of our community, specifically those children who don't have the opportunity to start school on an equal playing field, as some of their peers, largely due to their parents and some of the resources that have to be split between basic human needs and an opportunity to go to school with a new backpack or new sharpened pencils or crayons. And we all get those, you know, parents are not strangers to the school supply list that we get, and you have to go to Target or Walmart or any local West Sacramento business to go down that list, and some of us have very little resources. So I invite the community, those of us who are watching from their homes, and everybody here, to spread the word that collections for donations will be continued through August 2nd. However, I will personally collect donations of backpacks and school supplies. I intend to create a couple of drop-off sites, so stay tuned. I'll have that on my city council website, so that way, we as a community can come together and support the betterment and equalization of our children's education.
All right, thank you. All right, I just had a couple, the, just wanted to first acknowledge all the stuff. We're going to, a couple of major announcements that were today and that many of us participated over the last week. Today, the announcement by AARP that West Sacramento was one of 129 cities nationwide and five in the state of California to win the AARP Community Challenge. It's a small, I mean, it's a very small amount of resources, so, you know, folks are already, well, are you going to solve homelessness or senior housing with this? No, that's $10,000. It's a small amount of resources, but it was a very competitive process throughout the country, and the resources are there to help us in conjunction with the grants that we've already received for the work that we're doing on jump bikes and VIA and on the Bike Master Plan, to ensure that folks of all ages in the community are maximizing their access and use and making it simple and easy and fun and affordable for everyone to get mobility in the community. So it was a good, good vote of confidence and a continued really solid partnership with AARP here in West Sacramento. And then the other two were the two significant company moves in the last, in the last week, the grand opening of, and the ribbon cutting for La Mesa RV Center, the largest RV showroom in America now, and a significant part of our, of our, of our economic landscape in the city going forward. And then also McCouny Color, which, for those that don't know, is a, it was a company that started as a, in Japan, as a, as a firm that made color ink essentially for, for a variety of printing purposes. Along the way, discovered that many of the same processes could be used to make some of the conductive material inside of electric vehicle batteries, and batteries that also serve homes and other forms of storage, and they are the, although they are not allowed to say this, they are, they are the supplier for the Tesla factory in Reno, and also have additional companies and partners coming on board. So they are also a significant player, and we did their ribbon cutting and a tour with them in the chamber as well. So significant economic progress on those fronts, and so economic development and housing on that one, and certainly the Deputy City Manager, John Robinson, and Parks and Recreation and many of the other city departments, Transportation and Public Works, of course, on the AARP grant as well. And then last week, for a day, I was in Kansas City for the Mayor's Entrepreneurship Summit, both to promote and help other cities learn from what we're doing on the entrepreneurship space. There's a lot of interest in kids, in the West Sacramento Home Run and the relationship between entrepreneurship and internships and others, but also honestly to make connections with potential funders, you know, to broaden additional resources for, for that work. That led to the publication of an article about the Home Run in West Sacramento, again as one of the nation's leading initiatives in this space. So a good session around how to, how to blend inclusive entrepreneurship into programs that, that serve youth, and we'll be following up with them as well. And then yesterday, the Food and Agriculture Innovation Council, we met, it's a branch of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, focused on obviously food and ag innovation and growing, growing existing companies, startups, and attracting companies from elsewhere into the food and agricultural innovation space. It's region-wide, serves the six-county region, I'd say at least half, half of the active members are from Yolo. It's chaired, co-chaired by the CEO of Rayleigh's, Michael Teal, as well as the CEO of Rabobank. And we're working a lot on the Bayer Collaborator space, but also the Venture Capital Fund, the main Venture Capital Fund that Bayer is investing in for startups in our, in our region and elsewhere, but also others that Bayer is investing in as a second partner, second or third partner as well. So the council is working on those specific programmatic elements, as well as a potential study mission to the Research Triangle area in North Carolina, which has been identified along with St. Louis as one of our two, the two peer regions that we're, that we're working with. And then the other major player in that, in that council besides us and some of the companies is UC Davis. And so it's a, it's turning out to be a very useful forum for, for the, for the kinds of collaboration that's necessary to transfer the technology and the patents and some of what's happening at UC Davis into real startups and then into growing companies that produce real wealth and income and, and jobs at scale in the community. So positive, positive efforts underway there. Diane Richards also serves on that council from Economic Development as well. So if there are no further reports, then item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions, which is one appointment, I'd like to appoint Councilmember Sandin as the city's voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And also thank her for her willingness to serve in this capacity. We often, we usually have not sent a delegate to that, to that conference, and, but the league takes up lots and lots of issues at that conference that are critical to West Sacramento, issues around, around taxation and transportation and regulations, and so will be well-served. And so make that nomination, ask for a motion to approve.
We'll gladly make that motion. Thank you, Councilmember Sandin.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protemla Desma and seconded by Councilmember Roscoe. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Again, thank you for serving. That brings us to the Consent Agenda, which is items 2 through 17. Are there any items for separate question or comment or to remove from consent?
I have a quick question on 2.
Okay, then let's proceed to item 2, which is Consideration of Resolution 18-14 Authorizing the Collection of Special Tax on the Secured Tax Rule in the Same Manner as the Ordinary Ad Valorem Property Taxes for Existing Community Facility Districts for Authorized Capital Facility Construction Purposes. Councilmember Sandin.
Very, very quick question about CFD 26 that's being removed and closed out this year.
That's correct.
And then if, if the project, if a project were to move forward, it would reopen? Is that how that works? I just don't know how closing, closing out and reopening works.
Yeah, that was kind of a unique short-term financing. It had a 10-year balloon payment on the principal amount, and we'll be working with developers of Yarborough when they proceed to do new, new CFDs, both for maintenance and for capital facilities.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 8 is Consideration of Approval of a Contract for Professional Services with Dominicelli and Associates for the State Streets Waiver Water Capacity and Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. Well, I was excited to read this report because I am a frequent walker and jogger in the state streets, and I know that many of our neighbors have been requesting improvements to the sidewalks and roadways in many of the state streets. With that said, I understand that several pipeline replacement projects need to be in place to repair infrastructure deficiencies prior to any of the sidewalk and roadway repairs. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilmembers, that is correct.
If I were to go onto the community and answer a question such as, when would we reasonably expect some of the sidewalk repairs to take place? What would be the range of time?
Mayor, councilmember, in terms of the schedule, just to kind of tie the two projects together, the water and sewer infrastructure project is scheduled to be starting design in August of this, so next month. We anticipate to advertise that project in spring of next year, and then basically take the entire balance of the year, depending on the full level of scope of the water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure, to construct that project. So at the same time, we're designing in-house the pavement rehabilitation project, and pending the available funding, our, our schedule is to actually advertise and to begin construction of the pavement rehab in spring of 2020.
Is that, that would be the sidewalks?
Yes, correct.
So essentially, if we even tried to repair any sidewalks, we'd, we'd have to rip them out at some point in order to replace the infrastructure, so that's why we're happy to get to the infrastructure first?
That is correct. Now, one thing, one point of clarification is that the, the water and sewer project in of itself is, is repairing some of the sidewalk in terms of putting in all the laterals, but the pavement rehabilitation project is not necessarily doing any sidewalk work. We're doing curb ramps, curb and gutter, and the pavement. Now, per our municipal code and our, the Highway Streets and Code, or the California Streets and Highway Code, the sidewalk is responsibility of the property owner. So right now, our scope does not include sidewalks, other than what we're impacting by laterals or the ramps that we'd be improving with the project.
I see. So sidewalk repairs are needed, that's the responsibility of the property owner?
Correct. Per the municipal code and the state code, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rumbia, did you have anything else to add?
He answered the question.
All right, thanks. And thanks for the question. It's, sidewalks are, they are challenged because they are, they are, there's a source of funding for sewer repairs, the sewer, sewer rates, same water main repairs and what have you, and they're, we're able to get grants for some of the rehabilitation of the street, the streets themselves, but, but it is often a question, when, when is my sidewalk going to get fixed? And in most cases, it is when, when you, the property owner, are prepared to fix it. It's not ideal, but it is, it is usually, that is the case. In some cases, because of ancillary improvements, like if the ADA work, or if the sidewalk gets torn up by a project of the city, then the city comes in and fixes the sidewalk. But we don't have a funding source for, for broad, for broad-range sidewalk repair across the city, or for the installation of new sidewalks, because the installation of existing sidewalks was mostly covered by the paint, by the, the homeowners that purchased those homes in the beginning through development impact fees or the equivalent back then. So someday, all right, thank you, Mr. Rumbia. Okay, those were all the items on the Consent Agenda. There's no further question or discussion? Is there a motion?
I move the recommended action.
With the amendment, is there?
No, there's a.
Second, oh, it's 19.
Okay, it's been moved by a member of Protemla Desma and seconded by Councilmember Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 18, item 18 is public hearing in consideration of Resolution 18-46 Certifying Inclusion of Delinquent Charges and Penalties for Wet Water Sewer and Refuge Services on the Secured Tax Rule in the Same Manner as the General Taxes and Directing That a Lean Also Be Placed on the Subject's Properties. Ms. Carter.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Claire Connor, Accounting Manager from the Administrative Services Department. Finance Division of the Administrative Services Department is currently providing all utility-related billing, collection, and customer services. At the end of each fiscal year, we rely on the annual transfer of the delinquent amounts to the property tax bill for collection. This process begins in June by mailing a notice to all customers that have a delinquent April balance. These notices encourage the property owners to pay or contact us for questions. The final step to, is to hold this public hearing to request council's approval of transferring the final delinquent account list to the 1819 property tax rolls. As of tonight, the total delinquent amount has been further reduced to 590,250. We will continue accepting payments through July 27th, and the final list will be generated in early August. Staff in the revenue collection will make sure the final delinquent list submitted to the county is prepared accurately. With that, with that, I would like to return this item back to public hearing. Thank you.
All right, other questions before we open the public hearing? All right, thank you. Then we're going to open the public hearing on item 18. We don't have any requests to speak, but because it is a legal public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing, return it back to the council. If any further questions or discussion or for a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mayor Protemla Desma. Seeing no.
Exhibit A, probably.
That's item 19.
Oh, that's 19, okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 19 is public hearing in consideration of Resolution 18-41 Certifying the List of Past Due Code Enforcement Charges, Directing That a Lean Be Placed on the Subject's Properties and Requesting Inclusion of These Charges on the Secured Tax Rule in Order That They May Be Collected in the Same Manner as General Taxes. Mr. Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Josh Hurley, and I am your Code Enforcement Manager. Listed here today in Exhibit A is a list of three properties that have outstanding code enforcement violations and fees due to them. Two of these, excuse me, two of these properties have fees associated with late payment charges, and one of these properties has fees associated with some rebatement by the city. Besides receiving monthly invoices for these fees, these properties and property owners have all been notified numerous times. All property owners have been given an administrative hearing and a chance to address their violations and these fees. The fees listed are all over 30 days past due as of May 2018, are currently still past due today, and will be checked one more time prior to going over to the Yolo County Tax Rule. With that, I'm glad to answer any of your questions and happy to turn it back over to you for public hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And what you have, what we have before us is revised recommendation that removes one of the properties, presumably because the property owner has made the appropriate payments, or?
That's correct. It was paid today.
So we're down to three, okay. All right, are there any questions for, for Mr. Hurley before we open the public hearing? Mr. Johansson.
Just maybe a quick one. So just, I mean, it's maybe a side topic, but is there any trend that you can see out of these code enforcement? You know, I think, you know, it may be something that we could look at the future when we're trying to improve neighborhoods, and we see there's a particular concentration of code enforcement violations in a neighborhood, it could lead to additional action in those neighborhoods, or there may be some cause for this. I don't know if we necessarily can glean that out of this information, but they seem that, well, they're a little bit disputed, distributed throughout the city, but I don't know if there's any pattern that you've seen here, or it's just kind of random.
Councilmember Johansson, I believe you're asking, do we see any type of general pattern with code enforcement violations in certain areas and certain types of violations over one, one more than the other? There is a pattern, I guess, you would say, and it, it just kind of depends, I would, you know, say that a lot of the violations tend to do this time of year with, with the seasonal weeds and, and, you know, abatement of those weeds that needs to be done due to the, obviously, the, the season. And then there are some other areas of the city that do have some other types of violations that I guess you would, you could, you could find, yes.
So, so maybe maintenance issues would take a significant portion of these, routine land maintenance or house maintenance or? Routine land maintenance or house maintenance or, so just not paying attention to property, I guess, would be the bottom line?
That's correct. The majority of our code enforcement violations are nuisance violations by the property owners.
Right, right. All right, thanks.
But the, I think that the code enforcement violations, the long list is the list of weed abatement violations, and the other code enforcement violations are just the three on that first, that first page?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, so what's before, but nineteen is just, is just the three.
Weed, that's right.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so we'll open the public hearing on item nineteen. If you step aside in case somebody wants to challenge you, Mr. Hurley. All right, so we don't have any requests to speak on this item, but also since it is a legal public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on item nineteen? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, return to the council for further question, discussion, or motion.
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to item twenty, which is public hearing in consideration of resolution eighteen dash seventeen certifying the list of weed abatement charges, directing that a lien be placed on the subject properties and requesting inclusion of these charges on the secured tax rule in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes. Fire Marshal Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As directed by resolution eighteen sixteen, which began the two thousand eighteen weed abatement process, fire department notified owners who had properties who had a weed nuisance. I'm here tonight to close that process. Any properties who had weed abatement issues have been mitigated. List of charges has been created, including a twenty percent special assessment. However, we have amended the staff report prior to the meeting at last minute to add a property, but thank you to the city attorney who notified me that as it was a last minute add and the property owner was not properly noticed, we cannot add them to the lien list. So if we can update that list this evening, which would be the original list with a total of eighteen thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars minus one property, is that?
Yes. One question. It looked as though in one case you might actually be reducing the amount. There was an invoice that looked slightly less.
I did a quick, really quick review. So what property was that? And maybe we have, as, so we get the invoices, we invoice the properties, and we give them an opportunity to pay, and they have up until July thirty-first, which is the last day for us to accept checks or payment before we send that list in. So we may have accepted payment on a property.
An update that reduces the amount owed would be fine. It's only, it's only adding new property or increasing the charge. Okay, so, but I think you are correct. We can't add new properties in at this point.
Okay. So with that, it's respectfully recommended that the city council open a public hearing to see public comment on the updated lien list.
Okay. And which is the property that should be coming off the list?
It would be, on your staff report, would be the final property listed, Douglas Street and Lighthouse Drive.
Not, not the Ramco property?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the new list. I'm sorry. The new list, that is correct, the Ramco Street property.
Okay.
For twelve, one thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Okay. All right. Then with that, we're going to open the public hearing on item twenty. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the council for further question, discussion, or a motion.
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tembla Desma and seconded by councilmember Roscoe. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-one is workshop on the parks and open space master plan update, level of service analysis. Ms. Michael.
Good evening, Merrick Baldwin, members of the council. This item is a workshop on the parks and open space master plan update, and I am joined this evening by Michael Svetz with Prose Consulting, the firm that was selected to help us with this process. We launched the update to the two thousand three parks master plan in the fall of two thousand seventeen. Since then, we've been working to collect information to help us better understand our park and recreation facility and programming needs in the community. Some of the information that we've collected to date was shared with you earlier this year. We'll touch on that just a little bit this evening, but the majority of the presentation is going to focus on new information related to a level of service analysis on our parks and recreation system that was recently completed. We look forward to your feedback this evening, not only on the work that's been completed to date, but also on any items that we need to be considering as we move forward with this important planning process. I'm going to turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to, you know, kind of share an update with you. As Tracy said, there is-
A gigantic bottle of wine indication of how long a presentation is.
Fifteen, twenty minutes. Depends on the Q and A. So as Tracy said, it's going to be a very quick overview of some of the information that you saw at the strategic retreat back in, I think it was January, February, around that time, but most of it is new information. So without further ado, make sure I get this going in the right direction. So just very quickly, the process is really about where are you today? And where do you want to go, but most importantly, how do you want to get there? And one thing that we want to make sure that we root this in, this entire plan in, is total cost of ownership. It is not just about capital improvements. That is sometimes the easiest money to come by, the one-time funding, but we need to take into account also the operations and maintenance money that is necessary to basically maintain what you invest in. And then, of course, nothing lasts forever. I made reference to sidewalks, though it's not your responsibility. At some point, everything has a lifecycle to it. And so we will root this plan in that concept going forward. So as you saw before, we had project website input. This really took into account well over a couple hundred comments, and it is still going on. We actually are using it right now to solicit feedback on Memorial Park as well as continued dialogue related to the master plan. We did intercept surveys. The intercept surveys were done in conjunction with staff. They were done via Survey Monkey as well as hard copy. We collected over four hundred sixty-nine of those responses. And then we also did a statistically valid survey. This survey was conducted last fall, and our target was three seventy-five, and we ended up with about three hundred eighty-one surveys. Just to give you a quick snapshot, this is where the responses came from. One of the challenges of doing a statistically valid survey, to make it statistically valid, is that it's demographically and geographically representative of your community. Both of those boxes or goals were checked, and you can see that based on where you have population, this is primarily where we had received all of those responses. So what we do is we really kind of take a, if it'll go, an iterative, kind of interactive approach to being able to take all of that community input and analyze it and create prioritized needs for your community. As was shared back at your council retreat, the number one thing is walking and biking trails. But we also saw other things such as covered picnic areas, larger community parks, shade on play areas, open space conservation. We've kind of divided this into high, medium, and low categories. It doesn't mean that you don't do the things at the bottom, you just don't do them throughout the community. You're very strategic about where you invest, such things as pickleball courts, obviously boat launching facilities, and so on and so forth. Same thing with programs and services. We identified the high, medium, and low categories there. Highest, really through the statistically valid survey, was actually adult fitness and wellness programs. But when we started to take into account the community feedback through the website as well as the intercept survey, community special events kind of nudged that to number two. So you are a community of special events, whether they're ones that you do yourself or whether it is something that is permitted. A lot of the other programs that kind of, you know, landed in the higher category are really geared towards outdoor, family, and kids. And so, again, the rest of the programs are not things that you necessarily don't do, but you're very strategic so that you're not utilizing all of your public spaces for programs that have a very small audience. So we use this information to really help inform level of service. But we always talk first about park classifications, because sometimes we get into a discussion about the fact that a park is a park is a park. Every, different parks have different outcomes to them. They have different sizes, they have different amenities. So just very quickly to run through the different park classifications that we are using to help define your level of service. Pocket parks are really just small, open spaces. Maybe you have a bench, they might have a gazebo to them, point one, point two acres. Neighborhood parks, school parks, you have many of them, but as you'll see, you'll also see a need for more of them. They are, you know, the typical, where you have a playground, you have a walking path, maybe a picnic area, but you're not really intending for that park to be used outside of the neighborhood in which it's serving. Community parks, I like to call neighborhood parks on steroids. They have more amenities to them, athletic fields, a lot of the same elements you would see in neighborhood parks, but they have a much larger service area, and as the name, you know, dictates, typically, they serve the community as a whole. Regional parks typically serve outside of your community. You have a couple of these now and a number of them that will potentially come online as, over the next ten to fifteen years. Sports complexes, just as the name indicates, really about athletic fields. Special use parks, standalone dog parks, standalone skate parks, boat launching facilities, you know, trailheads, standalone trailheads, they are special use in dame. And then, of course, green belt trail, recreation corridors, and then lastly, conservation park and open space. So as we dive into level of service, I'm going to kind of show this to you in a couple of different formats. One is going to be a spreadsheet and a chart, and the other is going to be more about equity mapping, which I will explain in a second. So we have, I have three different slides to show you related to level of service. So what we and staff did a great job of really identifying all of your city-owned inventory and all of the other publicly accessible inventory. And really tried to identify, based on park classification, what your current service level is per thousand people. And so you currently are at about three point seven six for those top five categories. One thing to point out, green belt, open space, conservation parks, one of the things that the community was very high on in wanting, in wanting you to preserve, was those kind of parks. You have almost twenty acres per thousand folks. You can pretty much check that box and say that you have met that community need and will likely continue to meet that need going forward. So as we kind of move over to the green column, it gives you an understanding of the recommended service levels. We are taking into account the general plan twenty thirty-five, which really took into account two different type of, I guess, park classifications that were kind of mushed together to give you a five point oh acre per thousand. We have diligently kind of tried to break the five point oh out into the appropriate categories so that you're still landing at a five point oh per thousand, but it's spread out across pocket parks, neighborhood parks, community parks. So when you, you take into consideration your current inventory and you take into consideration the recommended service level standard, you have a grand total need with today's population of about sixty-six acres. If, as the population grows over the next ten years, you have a need of about ninety-eight acres. The majority of that is in neighborhood parks, and it is also in community parks. Did the same thing for service level standards for outdoor amenities. So all the different types of athletic fields, tennis courts, picnic shelters, reservable picnic shelters, and so on and so forth. Without, same, same methodology, identify what your current level of services, take into account the needs associated with the community, establish a recommended service level, and identify what the needs are going forward. Your primary needs are in a couple, three different areas. Athletic fields, reservable picnic shelters, tennis courts. You currently do not have publicly accessible tennis courts in West Sacramento. As far as the recreation corridors, we typically don't like to establish a recommended service level for this, but in keeping with the general plan, we kept that at point five. The reason that we typically don't like to recommend that is it's more of a regional network of opportunity and connectivity. So necessarily establishing a recommended service level based on acreage or miles, you know, you don't want to have just recreation corridors to nowhere. You want them, you want to have a connected network. As of right now, you currently are meeting that standard, but that also doesn't mean that you're not going to continue to establish recreation corridors that will carry trails going forward. And then indoor facilities, you are completely fine. Our recommendation is one acre, or one square foot per thousand folks, one square foot per person in your community, and you're at about one point three four. So what does this look like in terms of equity mapping? What I'm going to show you is a series of maps just based on the different parks that take into consideration the size of the park and the density of the population around that specific park. I'm going to show you maps from the different type of park classifications to give you an understanding of how your park system looks in terms of gaps and/or overlaps based on the different park classifications. So you will see some smaller circles. That could simply be that that park is really, really tiny and/or you have a lot of density in terms of population around it. You also may see some larger circles. That means that park could be really, really large, or you don't have a lot of population around it. So from a pocket park perspective, you have some. You certainly, it is not something that the city typically will go out and invest in. This is usually the development community that does that. But you do have pocket parks, you do have some gaps. Neighborhood parks, you can see that the green circles are city-owned, the blue circles are other-owned, primarily school parks and/or the port. You can see that you have significant need for neighborhood parks in the northern part of your community as well as southern, and certainly in your densest areas of population in the central part of the community. Community parks, even less coverage when you start to consider the fact that we're really showing, I think, about six different community parks in your community. Regional parks, these are primarily the port-owned areas, Barge Canal, and you do have coverage of those, but of course, you have other regional parks that are potentially going to come online with the development along the riverfront, the Bridge District, and potentially in the Stone Lock area. Special use parks, decent coverage, especially when you consider, you know, these are not things that you typically put in all parts of your community. And then we also did a number of maps for all of the different amenities that we are shown on the level of service table. This is just an example of reservable picnic shelters, which was really high in terms of need in your community, and you have significant gaps in being able to offer this type of amenity to your community. So we also wanted to take into consideration, yes, you have needs. You have needs today in terms of park acreage, you have needs going forward. But what we wanted to do is take into consideration, what does the future look like? What is the acreage that you have planned but has yet to be realized? Start to realize that you have about four hundred and seventy-two acres of parkland that is planned for, but it is not yet developed. The significance of this is very simply, you are not necessarily going to be in the business of trying to acquire property to build parks. It is really about trying to develop what is on the books. So how does that translate to, sorry, how does that translate to level of service table? When you take into account all the acreage that is part of your future, that's planned for but yet developed, and you recognize and you add it to your current inventory of either city-owned and/or school and other property, other-owned, you start to realize that you have close to six hundred and seventy-one acres potentially that can be a part of your system. This does not- This does not account for any of the open space or conservation areas. So we've kind of lined up the needs met, um, uh, columns there. The twenties, the blue is the 2017 based on your current, the 2027 based on your current, and then the 2027, if you were to develop all of the park, the 472 acres, you satisfy almost every one of your needs, uh, with the exception of seven acres of neighborhood park property. So the takeaway is simply you're not in the business of trying to acquire new property. It's about developing the property that is already on the books. How does this translate to the equity maps? Um, the red circles start to indicate, uh, how you start to close gaps. Uh, so you really start to close gaps in the, uh, the, uh, Washington Realized Area, the Bridge District area, and of course, the southern part of your community. Neighborhood parks, um, also, uh, mostly in the southern part of your community is where you start to close those gaps. Community parks, you still, um, you still have significant gaps in the areas of your community, um, that have already been developed and it's very simply because there aren't any planned community parks in that area. Regional parks, you can see all of the potential regional parks, uh, that, that show up with all those red circles and same thing with the special use parks. So as part of the, um, as part of the, the master plan, um, we were also charged with kind of doing some site-specific master plans that I just want to walk through with you. Many of you are familiar with these, um, but the two are really the Central Park, uh, as well as the, um, the school, uh, the, the partnership that we, uh, kind of ventured down the road with the school district regarding Westmore Oaks as well as the charter school site. So the reason for the, the Central Park is that there just, you know, there were a number of reasons to update the 2003 plan. Um, there was a lot of levy work that had gone on, a number of elements of the 2003 plan had already been constructed and also we wanted to take into consideration the needs from the needs assessment, uh, portion of this plan. The school district properties, as I mentioned, Westmore Oaks, uh, they were done in close coordination with the school district principals, um, administrators of the, the school area. Um, these were done simply to kind of fill in some of the, uh, the gaps that exist in the equity mapping. Um, they also provide additional neighborhood park and community park areas in the central part of the community. Um, you have the opportunity, as you already do now, to leverage both city and school resources. These, uh, the school district properties are not considered as part of the level of service, just simply because they need to be folded into the work plan, uh, work, long-range plan that schools have, uh, for the charter school site as well as Westmore Oaks. But we wanted to take a look at, you know, how those could potentially be done. So the revised park, um, Central Park concept, which I know you've already seen before. Number one, this was done, um, not in isolation, it was done in conjunction with economic development, community development, public works and flood. Um, the, uh, new, this concept really kind of keeps many of the elements associated with the original concept, as I mentioned, uh, but it also kind of adds some new ones. Uh, it also kind of creates a nice little seamless transition between recreation and flood prevention, um, celebrates kind of the historic lock infrastructure, uh, that is in place, and also it's on water. Uh, and that is, a- as you know, with your waterfront, your, your Washington Realized Areas, that's, that's a really unique opportunity for an opportunity of recreation, flood protection, as well as potentially economic development. And it's really grounded in some of the real, real estate development opportunities, um, that potentially exist. So the, there's really three components to it, the Barge Canal Parkway, um, which is between Jefferson, uh, and the Palma Desia Bridge. Um, these areas are really walking and biking paths, a new pedestrian bridge, neighborhood parks, and then, um, the expansion of the Sam Combs Park, uh, which really would create some, an amphitheater area, uh, opportunities for, uh, a non-motorized watercraft marina, uh, arboretum or a botanical garden, uh, as well as, um, support amenities such as, uh, public restrooms. The Stone Lock Plaza is really about an adaptive reuse of the locks infrastructure, uh, takes into a kind of splash pad, pedestrian bridge, uh, seasonal skating rink, um, possible opportunities for special events, which was, um, a big component of what your community had said they wanted. And then also kind of the, the Sacramento River Parkway area, um, which is to the, to the right portion of that, um, large open spaces, a, a neighborhood park, as well as then adaptive reuse of the, uh, water treatment plant. So, um, we also, as I mentioned, we also took into consideration, this is another view of rendering of what it could look like, uh, to kind of develop a park within the midst of economic development and work hand in hand. One of the themes that was presented to you all back in, uh, the retreat was how do we develop parks through economic development and vice versa? This is a really, potentially a really good opportunity for you to do that. And then the, uh, school district plans, um, the charter school site, uh, is about five acres. So if you recall, your total neighborhood park need, still on the books, unplanned parks is about seven acres. Um, this is also in a part of the community, central part of the community where a neighborhood park is needed. Um, and it, it's a basic, uh, neighborhood park, entrance, walking paths, tennis court, pickleball court, uh, picnic areas, uh, a multipurpose field as well as a playground. So what does that look like when you take into consideration? So I just kind of cropped the images, so to speak, and what does this take into consideration? This is the before, um, equity map on your left. It kind of gives you an understanding of the, kind of the hole in the middle there. Um, and then on the right, you can kind of see where that charter school site would be. It really helps to fill a gap in a heavily densely populated area of your community if that park were be, to, were to be developed in conjunction with the school district. Now, we also take a look at Westmore Oaks. This is really, um, an opportunity to, uh, meet some of those needs with, from an athletic field perspective, uh, and this is, it's a community park, almost a quasi-sports complex, um, but you have opportunities for three different soccer fields. You obviously have the, um, the, the landing related to, uh, Sycamore Trail, uh, which you all have just recently approved, um, as well as then the school district approved, um, just a couple, last week or a couple of weeks ago. Um, this takes into account the use of the bus yard and the solar panel area. We also took into account what that would look like if the bus yard and the solar panel area stayed. Um, again, uh, what does that look like from an equity map perspective? You can see on the left, uh, if the Westmore Oaks was not developed, what that gap looks like from a community park perspective, and then on the right, uh, you can see how that facility, if constructed, would really go a long way to, to filling a gap in the center part of your community, uh, related to, um, community parks. So our next steps are very number-driven. Um, Recreation Center Business Plan, uh, we hope to complete a draft of that in the month of August. Continued, um, looking at operations and staffing assessment, just simply to make sure that as you implement a Parks Master Plan, what is it going to take for you to continue to operate and maintain those at a high level? Uh, capital improvement plan, as well as all of the different funding strategies associated with it. Most of them exist today. What are your opportunities in the future? And then an impact fee update, uh, after we take into consideration all of the other funding strategies, um, that are, uh, on the table. Questions, concerns, comments, suggestions?
All right, Mayor Protem LaDesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation and, um, all the way from, this, this, the presentation really helped me understand the level of service grids that were within the presentation, which frankly, I was a little, I was trying to understand what, what you were getting at and it's very, um, so your explanation from it tonight was, was very helpful to understand sort of what, given us or given us a view of what we should be, uh, striving for, at least what, and I'm not sure that's the right term, which is part of my questioning around how we approach this because, um, looking at the current level of service, and there's lots of categories that we are showing we're not meeting expectation or standards. Uh, it's the standards that I'm sort of questioning even, um, because, because, um, I think what was, was helpful was seeing the, uh, the geographic maps and the equity maps that kind of also so kind of impact from the, from the geographic perspective because I, I, what I'm getting to is this, or this, I'm, I'm, I want to get to the August discussions around strategies because when you lay this out, while it's very helpful as a tool to understand where we are, um, it also, it comes concerned about the expectation it sets because of areas. I'm just going to point out the State Streets, which we just, uh, Councilor Roscoe just brought up from, um, it's an older neighborhood and it's, there's, you brought it up yourself, it's landlocked, there's lots of things we're trying to do there, uh, we have to find funding for and help make those things. Parks isn't, it's the hardest thing to fund. Um, and, and frankly, in, 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 uh, that area and other established areas, there's very little to work with. Now, you've conceptualized two areas that we could, and that's not including the, the Stone Locks area, which is, I think is helpful, but back to the level of service standards and, and from a policy perspective, I'm, I, I'm, I'm, there seems to be maybe another lens we need to apply, apply to that as we start thinking about how we start prioritize it. And, and the equity one's a good roadmap, but I'm, but I'm also, look, we, we can't fund it all. And we need to be very strategic on which ones are going to have the most impact, just like we, we, we take our infrastructure planning that we've utilized through all the mechanisms we have, whether it was redevelopment or Measure G or whatever we've had, and we tried to find projects that were trans- transformational for a neighborhood or for the city that would either activate riverfront or the business parks or whatever else to kind of start a project. And, and that's what I, what I'm going to be looking for here in terms of what is our roadmap for getting park service. And I'm, I'm not necessarily going to look at this grid in nine years. You project out 2027, that's not very far away. Um, and we're, I'm just worried, we're, we, how are we going to achieve that? And what kind of funding are we going to have? And where can we be even more strategic than what you intimate through your prioritization of high level and low to kind of define the areas of most need or that are going to be able to, um, either garner other types of funding strategies, be it, um, as we did in Heritage Oaks Park where we had a, a, a private operator plan to come through, or some other mechanism. I think that's what I'm, that, the implementation strategies that go toward that are going to be imperative. Um, because I'm, I'm just worried that you look at this on its own, it, it's something that says that we, we've got to hit this level of the service standards, um, and it's just, it's a daunting task to get from here to there, especially when you, we don't have impact fees flowing to, um, the older neighborhoods in Washington Broderick Bright or Old West Sac. And Southport has the most opportunities because you have Liberty, River Park, Yarborough all being planned and they usually come in planning those parks and the impact fees. So it's going to be the great challenge we have and I just want to make sure that we're thinking about, you know, uh, thinking about that, uh, and you are already, obviously, but it's just, that's going to be kind of me, the, the, the lens we have to put on because I'm not sure in nine years getting to the level of service which you project, you know, again.
I, I would agree with you. I think, um, one of our biggest challenges with regards to the undeveloped parks is to really look at this through a lens of what is realized? What is, what is reality over the next 10 years? Um, and, and focus on those, focus on the ones that are going to have the highest, the greatest need, focus on the ones that, uh, which you can leverage, um, multiple funding sources for, um, and, and really the ones that meet the community's highest, highest needs. Um, you're not going to be able to close all those gaps in 10 years. You're not going to be able to develop 472 acres of parkland. Um, the exercise for that was simply to understand that you're not in the business of trying to acquire land. The land already exists. The plans for some of those parks already exist. It's, it's the prioritization and a reality check of what are the funding sources available to actually make your priority projects happen.
Yeah, I think, I want to pick up on this because I had the same, the, the same point of, first is that I, I also thought the, the analysis here is, is excellent, it's really useful. Um, I, I, I like the, the mapping, um, approach a lot. So my comments are all, they're, they're largely aligned with what the Mayor Protem said, um, uh, but they're, they're sort of how to, how to take the tool further. Um, uh, because it is, it isn't even, I, I wish we could mostly make decisions based on what our top priorities are, but we don't have discretionary funding of virtually any kind whatsoever. So our, our, our primary lens is opportunistic. What is possible to achieve? Within that, we want to make sure we're not achieving things that are not, that are not valuable to us. Um, and where there's a tiebreaker, we prefer to build the thing that is more needed soon.
Correct.
But we, we, this is the common misperception about how city, I mean, I know you know this, but it's a common misperception about how city government works is that we come to these meetings every week or that staff comes to City Hall and says, what's the highest priority that we should work on today? Uh, and when we have zero money to just pick our own priorities. So, uh, I think it's really important to, to lay that out so we are calibrating expectations and not, not every, every time we have a new, uh, Parks Plan, it's even better and greater than the last one that we still haven't been able to build because we didn't have the resources. I also think this mapping perspective could be really useful though in that respect in that, you know, a map that showed areas where impact fees can be generated and where they could be spent, right? So that a user looking at this is, oh my God, there's no parks in this area of the city. What a horrible social equity problem, what, you know, we need to do something about that, let's fix that. Well, how, right? So first is like, what is the, what is the supply side realities also?
Correct.
Uh, because not all neighborhoods are the same in terms of their ability to generate revenue. So a map that reflects impact fee, uh, impact fee potential, a map that reflects, um, uh, eligibility for the cap and trade money that supports neighbor, you know, parks in support of, uh, affordable housing or, or higher density development, for example. So, so let's show, let's, let's map that, the, the neighborhood-based assets that are there to be able to generate revenue as well, um, so that we can sort of then to layer them together and see, okay, are we, are we, are we doing those things? And also then allows us to say, okay, we have, there, there are these resources that are going to be on the table for this part of the city or for this kind of a park, therefore our priority for the, the piddling amount of Measure E dollars or other, uh, dollars that we have is going to be over here instead. Right? Um, and, and so sometimes we don't do that. We, you know, it's, it's, well, we got to submit that grant application tomorrow, um, for something and here's one that's important, council mentioned it last week, so let's, let's do that one. Um, and really take, having a map that, a couple of maps that showed us resource potential by, by area or by some of the special use types, who I think could also be useful in making both for us and for you and for members of the public that are, that are, you know, looking at this plan, seeing, you know, sort of, it, to some extent, it's also an explanation. Why is it this way?
Yeah.
You know, if, if, if you voted, I, I wasn't old enough, but if you voted for Prop 13, this, this map is you.
Right.
I mean, you voted for a system of finance that said parks are going to be paid for by impact fees, which meant they were mostly going to go in areas of new development.
Correct.
Uh, you know, only new neighborhoods got new parks because of the, the shift from property taxes to development impact fees. So there's a, there's a why behind these maps that, you know, we don't need to, we, this doesn't need to be a history book, but I think showing some of the, the fiscal capacity dimensions of this would, would, would help in, in, in that way. Um, so I, I, I just think that's, it is a, it's a very important point in this, in this respect. Also, I, I, I hope as we go further that in addition to the Parks Commission, um, that the Economic Development and Housing Commission looks at this too, because this is not, this does not exist in a vacuum of just like, well, in a dream world, what would we like to have? Well, we would like to have whatever the standard that's, that Cindy Tuttle's colleagues in the National Park and Recreation Society say the standard should be. No. That, that, yes, we, that's something to shoot for, but then we need to also ask Katie Jacobson, what can we pay for, um, you know, through development? And, and so the, so that commission, uh, you know, as, as Mr. Johansson early in his very, you know, his very, very first terms, that our, our parks, do our park standards match the development pattern that we're going to be using? And, uh, so like an acreage-based approach to what, what, what is a neighborhood park? What's a pocket park and all of that? I looked at my own park, the park I live right on top of, which is a garden park, and it's classified here as a pocket park. I presume because it's slightly smaller than Whitey, Whitey Bozclair Cock Park, which is no more of a, or no less of a neighborhood or pocket park than the one in the Bridge District. Um, but you might expect that, that parks in the, in the new urban dense parts of the city will be a slightly different kind of parking, maybe not the same acreage. The sense of open space that is created by a park of the same acreage in the Bridge District or in the new Washington neighborhood is not going to be the District or in the new Washington neighborhood is not going to be the same sense of space that a park in, in, in Yarborough or elsewhere in, in Southport might be. So I think this is a useful distinction, but it's also, it's a model, it's not reality. And so, you know, you know, tending to what those look like. And I think the other thing that you'll, you'll see is, a couple of times you said throughout the city is that we have this lazy and incorrect geographic view in our head in this city, that there's a north and there's a south.
Correct.
And what these maps reinforce is that there is, it's much more complicated than that. And it will become much more complicated that going, going forward. That there, that, because yes, in the, in the coming years, according to this map, you would, you would see a lot more parks and parks facilities in the north, but in the northeast, right? So in the, in the, in the, in the areas of new development, of course. Right? So it doesn't, we don't see, I mean, other than the park that we just did, Joey Loaf's Park, we don't see a lot of new parks in Meadowdale or Westfield or in Bright Proper for, as examples, in the neighborhoods along the West Capitol Corridor. So when we're, when we're thinking about social equity, sort of building, building a park, you know, next to, next to Reilly Field, isn't, the fact that it is in, it is north of Southport does not make it a social equity win. It's a, it's a, it's a park of an equivalent socioeconomic status. And so I would just be careful when I say, you know, we will have met that, we will have met that, that distribution with, with that set of parks. Having said that, I don't know how we will. We, we don't have the, until we're at a point where the West Capitol Corridor past Sycamore can be redeveloped, there isn't going to be resources for a large-scale amount of park construction, perhaps in the specialty park area, but otherwise probably, probably not. But I think that distinction is important. The other thing about the standards themselves is, I think on the specialty parks, when you, you said, you know, we don't really have a standard, and then I think it said that we don't meet the standard, whatever the standard isn't. In a place like this, water, you know, water-oriented parks, for example, to me, that's a particular kind of park, right? That we're a city in the, in the worst of times, in the flood stages, fully surrounded by water, and yet still with relatively few, given that geography, really relatively few water-oriented facilities and parks. So the Central Park concept is really important in that, in that respect. But that's a kind, to me, that's a kind of park in West SAC. And it's the same, it's as much as a softball park, as a kind of park.
Correct.
In West, in West SAC. And we ought to be, that, that's one of our geographic core competencies is waterfront, because we have so much of it surrounding the city and right through the middle of it, at the, at the port, that, that we ought to have, you know, if we have standards for different kinds of parks, that certainly feels like that should be one of them that we are, that we're building, building towards. Just a couple of other random comments. You mentioned that the trails and open, the open space, that we're, we're good on that space. And we are in terms of raw material, but we're not good on them in terms of actually being recreational, recreation usable in many cases, simply because of, you know, connecting facilities and trails and security and other sorts of things. So I, I know you're fully aware of that, but, but, you know, that, that is a priority in the, certainly in the survey work and everything else. And it's less expensive than building a whole new park, but it's, it also, it needs to, to be a key part of that. And I think, related to that, I think the Central Park concept, as opposed to the original Central Park concept, which was sort of a Central Park and, you know, New York-inspired, one gigantic piece of, of property, and this one is spread around a set of waterfronts. The one potential advantage or way to, to make that feel like a true Central Park is to be very deliberate about its connectivity. That from the beginning, it is designed to connect to the Riverfront Trail that, that goes all the way to Bright. From the beginning, it is connected to the Sycamore Trail in a very intentional way so that it serves the center of the city. From the beginning, it's connected to the Clarkford Branch Trail. From the beginning, it's connected to the, the main drain canal or, or, or an alternative in that portion of the city. So that every, every major portion of the city is connected by a park and, park and trail facility to the Central Park. That, in some sense, I think can give it a definition that a, that sheer size may not, may not afford. So I, I, I think there's some really great possibilities in, in that domain as well. So I think that was, is it all I had on this one? Mr. Johansson?
I'll take it, yeah. So the, in going through this, this is essentially a policy document, kind of what we'd like the city to look like over so many years of the plans in effect. And so what you've done is you've gone through some of the other policy documents to kind of come up with a level of service and expectations. Looks like the general plan you went through, you also went through the National Recreation and Park Association guidelines. To what extent did you look at our age-friendly action plan or, or look at, for example, possibly ARP guidelines for particularly outdoor amenities? Because one of the things that I see here is you have a level of service, and it's not really stratified by age. I've seen a couple of categories at, you know, senior activities, but the survey didn't really look like it was demographically stratified by age or ability.
We have that ability to do that for purposes of brevity. We kind of kept that out of this presentation. The idea behind the, typically what we find when we talk about the facilities and amenities that the community as a whole wants, if you start to think about what those, how those were prioritized and the higher-end things, they're typically the, the wide swath of age groups that can take advantage of that. And that's typically also how service programs and services, when you start kind of needling it down to pickleball courts, or you start needling it down to equestrian facilities or indoor basketball courts, you really start to, the, the number of sheer people that really want to use that, the community starts to get smaller. So when we do the cross-tabulation based on age and other sort of demographics, it usually aligns with your highest priorities just simply because when you think about community special events, for example, that, those are come-one, come-all events. Adult fitness and wellness programs, sometimes we, we kind of have in our head that that's a yoga class, but that's not what that means. That could be a walking program outside. So you really start to understand that many of the, the higher priorities are community-based. But we will do cross-tabulations on that survey, in particular about age, to give staff a better understanding, in particular around the program and service side of the equation. What, if you're, you're doing target marketing and you're specifically trying to get to a 50 and older crowd, or not 50 and older, but 50 to 60, and then 60 to 70, and then 70 and up, what are those programs and services that, that those different age groups want?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. And it's, I think it's, I think we've had the discussion around here whether to call something a senior activity because I figure you're going to get the folks participating. But to, to have it based on self-choice and kind of a level exertion that they expected the particular activity. And it gets to the point where, I mean, we're looking at the highest and greatest need, but we also have an obligation to serve folks that may not be part of that. So we have to drill down and provide those types of opportunities for folks.
Correct.
I might suggest that, or Tracy, that at the, prior to the next time we have this up and the next thing on the muscle, that if we can get the cross tabs, I think that will answer. For us, it'll help us understand the nuances better, you know, not necessarily to change anything, but to understand that they are reflected in the recommendations that you're making.
Correct.
Councilmember Sandy?
Thank you. I think this is super important for us. As you know, as you mentioned, we took it up at our, our planning retreat, our strategic planning retreat. For me, having, looking at all of our assets, looking at our gaps, looking at the opportunities and then expectations we want to set for ourselves, I, I just think this is incredibly useful for us to have the, kind of the planning metrics and the expectations, kind of that we agree upon. And for me, the, the concept planning portion for the Central Park and the Westmore Oaks and the Washington Middle College Prep School site, those things are really important because we may be doing, those are larger projects that we may have to do in pieces and we may have to do in phases. So we really need to flesh those out and understand what, what we want from those before, and I think as the mayor mentions, the connectivity. I mean, that, to me, is really important to do that work now. And, and as, as you know, our city, we're very, we are opportunistic and we do look for other kinds of funding and resources, notwithstanding that that comes from, from development. But for other parts of our, other parts of our city, and even, even in the newly developed areas, it's great to have the plan so that we can be ready for the opportunity.
Correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you. And I just, I wasn't planning to say anything, but thank you, Councilmember Sandy, and listening to all the comments. I mean, it strikes me, you know, we have had multiple conversations about Memorial Park and the improvements related to the park and how we're going to enjoy amenities that are new and improved and ADA compliant. However, that doesn't solve the problem that we have with the growth in the number of families and small children who want to enjoy Little League programs and the, the fact that we don't have facilities that can necessarily accommodate the growing population for, for very long, if we even have them now. So it, you know, I, I view the improvements and the possibilities over at the Westmore Oaks and especially the, the potential of having a sports complex there, given not only its proximity to the Sycamore Trail Overpass, which would allow children on the north side and families to, to, you know, walk or ride bikes to enjoy Little League programming or track and field or, or soccer. And yet, I, you know, we're faced with the same dilemma where it is that we're going to find this, you know, funding for this tremendous opportunity. And that is, you're right, in a densely populated, yet not activated area. I was just there this morning. I take my children. We, we take tours of every park in West Sacramento. So thank you for this beautiful map, because there are a few that we have. And we go to Circle Park, we go to Fred and Lavelle Holmes Park, there's nothing to do there but kick a ball. But we're happy it's there. And, you know, looking at that land and, you know, we got a visit by a skunk and got the heck out of Dodge immediately, but there's just so many opportunities that we see for that area. And with the complexion of our community, we, we see a lot more young couples pushing strollers and walking dogs. And when you sit at Memorial Park and you see all the families who enjoy the opportunities to, to, to see their youngsters go through the, the Little League system and eventually graduate out, you want those activities to thrive here. So I'm tremendously excited and optimistic as to, you know, all these opportunities and I'm grateful for this report, and I just certainly hope we can find ways of making these come to fruition.
Yeah, well, one of the areas, I mean, listening to the, the really great comments by my colleagues, one of the, one of the areas, I think, that because we've had both the Parks Director who has a lot of experience in the resources space, and so, you know, she can't help but think about, you know, levees or other things as potential recreation and parks amenities. And we have Ms. Michael who comes, who comes out of the economic development redevelopment space, she can't help but think about public-private partnerships. And so, so try not to think about those things, right? As we go through the next steps on these, it's true in most domains of society, but that the, a world in which government could provide all recreation and fitness and activity and socializing venues by itself, that era is not, it's gone. And in part because the diversity of how we all want to play and interact and relax has changed. And so we, you know, in a community that before might have defined itself just as a, just as a Little League community, now we have really active soccer and, I don't know, pickleball, I guess, and, you know, and, and hundreds of, you know, fishing and tennis and everything else, and things that we can't even imagine today. And, you know, the, the indoor soccer facility that's, you know, that's on the way, that's a private facility. The ropes facility is a, is a, is a private facility in a public partnership. And so we ought to be intentional about thinking about how to encourage and support that and also to account for it, right? So that, you know, if, you know, if, if 1,700, you know, private baseball facilities were to open up in the, in the city and we're still thinking, oh my God, we have to add, you know, we have to add another 30 acres of baseball, and maybe we don't, right? So we, we ought to, we ought to make sure that we're accounting for what's available, what's affordably available, that, that the private sector is providing or could in partnership with us and, and, or the school district or the port or other public sector partners in the community as well.
Correct. Great point. All right. This is Ms. Michael. And Ms. Tuttle, do you have sufficient feedback?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Item 22 is a workshop on the West Sacramento Home Run Policy Framework.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Ian Woodrock, and I'm the Program Manager for the West Sacramento Home Run. The purpose of my report is to request council consideration and deliberation on a draft policy document that would guide staff's future home run policy recommendations and home run expenditures. I'd like to provide a brief background and an overview of the draft policy document before turning it over to council for discussion. Staff will take council's comments and continue to work on a more refined home run policy document for council consideration at a future date. At the council's meeting on October 20, 2017, staff brought a workshop on potential concepts for home run program policy frameworks and features. The initial workshop was intended to provide staff with sufficient direction to effectively structure future home run programmatic workshops for consideration by council. Based on the feedback received from the home run program workshops, as well as a review of feedback received during previous council meetings where Measure E and the home run was discussed, staff has put together a draft policy document for council's consideration that includes previous council feedback as home run design principles. These design principles were embedded in council's previous discussions of the home run and are proposed as the basis of the home run policy framework that is both consistent with the universal Measure E policy framework, but specific enough to provide policy direction for the home run with respect to future requests for authorization of Measure E expenses, expenditures, rather, related to home run programs. To summarize the policy direction that has been given to date, council has at the broadest level created an evidence-based rationale or theory of action to improve educational and career opportunities for youth. This theory of action is predicated on the assertion that West Sacramento's residents and employers have historically suffered from an acute skills gap, resulting in an abundance of jobs, but also a persistently high unemployment rate. Also that completion of some form of post-secondary education is the best way to ensure that West Sacramento's youth have the skills and qualifications necessary for high-wage, high-growth entry-level careers in West Sacramento, once leaving high school or their post-secondary education. And that the West Sacramento Home Run Initiative will improve individual post-secondary attainment, reduce unemployment, and increase citywide workforce readiness by strengthening early childhood education opportunities, driving work skills acquisition, increasing college completion rates, and improving work-based learning and job skills acquisition. The Home Run Initiative will elevate the city now and in the future, making West Sacramento the best place to raise a family, access quality education, and find talent. Additionally, based on the policy direction that has been given to date, staff recommends that the following home run design principles be included in a home run policy framework. The first being, post-secondary attainment is critical to driving workforce readiness. The home run is a fully integrated system, not a sequence of independent entitlements. Fidelity to the fully integrated systems approach is a priority over programmatic key performance indicators. Universality of the home run programs is paramount, as there is no income eligibility requirement for any of the home run programs. Operational capacity should be built over time. Programmatic growth and/or expansion should be predicated on existing programmatic success. Additionally, the city is not a grant maker through Measure E to external partners to advance their organization's missions. Appropriate marketing and branding of the initiative and its programs is necessary to create an early expectation of all West Sacramento youth being college-bound. Predicting the employment market 20 years from now is no longer a possibility with the rise in automation, AI, and the gig economy, as well as data systems integration should facilitate meaningful evaluation and track youth progress longitudinally through the initiative while maintaining privacy of student data. Finally, iterative home run initiative policy changes and home run programmatic changes should be recommended to council for consideration when new evidence, research, and correlations from evaluation emerge. Council's provided programmatic policy guidance throughout the year, most of which is summarized in Attachment 1 of your staff report, and we look forward to your discussion this evening so staff can bring a more refined policy document back to you at a future date for your consideration. That's the end of my presentation.
Are there questions or discussion?
I actually have to.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you. Thank you, Ian. Just a couple of clarifying questions for me. I, I, tell me, free tuition at a community college, but what if a student decides to attend a UC or state school? Is there, are they still scholarship-eligible?
They are still scholarship-eligible. Council hasn't considered nor recommended any policy considerations for the scholarship portion of the West Sacramento Home Run yet.
Okay.
Although in the initial policy or consideration of Measure E expenditures in October 19th of 2016, council did provide some guidance as to what should be the qualifying factors for the up to $1,000 scholarship.
Okay. And then with respect to the eligibility... And then, with respect to the eligibility for the college promise, we were talking about Do the students, after they establish residency, have to prove that they went to a West SAC high school, or like River City, or Yolo, or independent study of some sort, or do they just merely have to be showing that they're a West SAC resident regardless of where that is they attended a secondary?
So, that's correct. Students must, part of the eligibility requirements for the West Sacramento college promise is that students must have at least one year of eligibility in West Sacramento through a reimbursement agreement with the Los Rios Community College District by and through its College Sacramento City College. They have a relationship with the Washington Unified School District, so the transcripts of students who are applying for the promise are received by Sacramento City College without the students needing to actively provide their transcripts. So, the infrastructure for that program is in place.
But, does the transcripts have to come from a West Sacramento school?
They do, indeed.
So, it's home and school?
It's both, because the transcripts are coming from the school district, so it shows that they've established residency within West Sacramento.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thank you, Ian. The, on the key performance indicators for college savings account, one is a return on investment. Is that just strictly the return on the account?
It's the return on the omnibus account for the city.
Okay, so just like an investment return, or simple as that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, on the, again, on the performance indicators for the career-ready internship, you basically have the number of integrated college and career path students in the Washington Unified School District, the number of integrated college and career path that are hired per calendar year, number of integrated college and career path interns hired in steps, integrated college and career path students hired into internships by pathway, average number of internship hours worked. But is there any measurement of the success of those internships?
Council hasn't defined success of those internships, other than what the definition of the internship is.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess that would be something that'd have to be, you know, how well did they do, in other words? Obviously, if they completed their internship with a certain period of time, but I don't know if there's any badging. I guess that would be part of the badging, too, as well, or successful completion of that particular task. But, isn't there also an element of quality of training during the internship program? Like, personal growth achievement, that type of thing?
So, there's a series of surveys that are conducted by the West Sacramento Foundation through their Project Future Ready, which determines satisfaction of both the intern and the internship provider. So, I'll go back and speak with the Executive Director of Future Ready, Chris Warden, as we start to dial into some of the metrics that could be provided by there and frame a definition of success in the internship and the digital badges.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Sandin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Winbrot. As usual, very thorough and very thoughtful. I really appreciate the digging into all the details. I was, I was thinking about, not tomorrow, or not next week, but the kind of longer-term impacts of this, and I didn't know if at some point we want to contemplate it. Again, it's not right away, but in that theory of action section, where the statements are, the West Sacramento Home Run Initiative will improve individual post-secondary attainment, reduce unemployment, increase citywide workforce readiness. At some point, we need to report on that, or talk about that. And I know that's going to be long-term, so not, again, not tomorrow, not next week, but at some point, we want to look back and reflect upon, did this home run kind of meet the expectation, hopefully exceed the expectation, and do these things? So, I think at some point, we just need to think about what that, what that report might look like. So, again, not, this is very, very focused on exactly the, all the bases, and what kind of expectation and guidance we're giving that, but I think, kind of a bigger-picture thing, did we achieve this at some point?
Mayor Protemba Desmond.
Yeah, thanks, Ian, for the update, and the document is, as Ms. Sandin pointed out, very thorough. And I don't really have a lot of comments, other than to agree with what Ms. Sandin said, because the outcomes, in one of the sections, we talk about what are the expected outcomes, and it's something that we're going to have to, we're going to have to kind of really get down to that point of, what are we expecting out of this in five, 10 years to be the case? So, while we're in startup mode here and getting everything going, the metrics you articulate, and a lot of, at the base level, are really, are really key. I'm not dismissing them at all, because we need them. I agree with Ms. Sandin. I'm sort of like, we have to be able to articulate, okay, just like in any other city-run program, we have expected outcomes that we're trying to get to, and you referenced that in one of the principles, which, what the expected outcomes. And I think we just really need to sharpen that lens around the outcomes, and I'm not looking for a measure right now either, but this is, you know, covering three specific programs, four, all intents and purposes, that we're trying to build up. And I agree with the principle that these got to be integrated, all these programs got to be integrated. That means they're all pointing towards these same outcomes. It isn't readily accessible, I'm going to be honest to me, to sort of how we're going to turn all these various actions, and how these are going to turn into those outcomes. And I'm confident we'll get there, and I think it's a large degree from us kind of absorbing all the nuances of, okay, we're getting, we're turning on the programmatic side of reimbursing the Community College District for the tuitions, working out the procedural kinks, getting people reimbursed, let me be aware that the program even exists. And that's all right and good, but at the end of the day, that we've, we're starting a platform and a system, which I very much believe in, around the city's role is indeed in preparing the workforce and supporting the families of its city to help achieve those goals. That's the outcomes that we want. So, I think, Ms. Sandin's point, we're going to have to get to some general, sort of, I don't want to use the word metrics, but certainly, we're going to get to some measures around, are we hitting, are we working towards those outcomes? Measure E, and you think about the other parts we hit, whether it was the homeless, reducing impacts of homelessness and reducing homelessness, this is kind of, it's very attainable, or there's a certain understanding of that by the common folks we talk to around, what does that mean? I can tell folks, home runs about doing all the things you point out in the theory of action, in item number C, right? It will improve individual post-secondary, and that's important because, frankly, I'm able to explain it in a simple sentence, like, most of the people we talk to that come for economic development, want to move their business here, they're asked about what are, what's our school system like, what's our workforce like? And to talk about this program is very much a benefit around it, as the mayor has told us many times, traveling, and you have too, Ian, traveling the country, and all of a sudden, we become a city of great benefit for employers to come. But I think that's kind of what my point is, is that I can translate that, and I think we just need to start from that base point of being able to talk about those outcomes, the basic metrics we're going to use to get there. And then, at the programmatic level, when we get to it, all these matter, and I'm not dismissing them all. The principles, I agree with, on this, the, the point, I'm just trying to find a way you can, frankly, how do you can get that to, how does it apply to each of the programs we're developing, and I'm not sure of that yet? So, for instance, the data systems integration should facilitate meaningful evaluation, track youth progress, and there's some statements there, a lot of detail in there. So, are we attaining all those? So, for instance, you know, I don't know, compliance with FERPA is a necessity. I'm just trying to understand all the nuances within there. How do we kind of track that down going forward? Does that make sense? Those, it feels more like those are action items to be done, rather than general principles, which I would agree with, the data systems need to be integrated, because you're tracking kids from the moment they go through learning matters, to when they're getting their tuition set up, tuition at college savings count, to when they're getting to community college. If you're able to track all that over the next 10 years, the systems will tell you that. So, again, maybe just kind of looking at those principles differently, and how can you take out some of the other more task-oriented stuff away from those? That'd have to be done in this program. So, I think it's, I think we're making good strides. I don't want to throw cold water, because I know this is a lot of, we're building the startup services in the city, and there's a lot of work that we're doing, and it's all good work. And I'm just trying to get it back to digestible pieces that, as, you know, folks talking in the city, they know it's a good thing, I just want to be able to start communicating what are we seeing right now, and how are we achieving those outcomes? So, that's my feedback.
Yeah, I agree. I think this, this is exhaustingly thorough, but it's great, and I think it's really important because, to some extent, because we've been having these items on the, on the home run at council, and they've all been at this level of, you know, of thoroughness, that I think even we sometimes forget, like, okay, what's the essentials, and for the community, what are the essentials, because we're so wrapped up in all these? But what I love about this document is that, I hope it will allow us not to see very many more items, or, you know, we'll just be seeing, you know, a contract for that, or approval of that thing, but you'll have a lot more coherent clarity around, okay, what to, okay, I know what to do, and I can go, just go do it, and you don't have to come back here with a 20-page item, you know, every, every three, every three meetings, which I think will also help us in terms of, like, being able to rise up to this level of, in the community around the issue, rather than every little detail. And so, I think, partly to help with the issue that Mayor Protemba Desmond identified, which I agree with, is that there are too many design principles, is to me, the design principles, more or less, are the letters, I mean, the top-level letters, and then all the other stuff underneath those are, you know, their interpretations, they're a little bit more detailed, but they're, they're no longer, those are not design principles, those are application of the design principles in specifics, you know, to specific cases. And that would make it seem a little, you know, two pages, two full pages in this small type of design principle seems like a bit much. So, I would try to, you know, kind of split those up, so that, you know, data systems integration that facilitates evaluation and whatever, that is a design principle, but some of the other elements underneath that really are, as he said, tactical. I think, so, on theory of action, you know, it's tempting, because we're an agency, to think about this program in a very brute-force way, which is that this program itself, through its components, is going to deliver these, these outcomes. And it is not. I mean, the most, one of the most powerful ways in which the home run will, will drive toward these outcomes is creating a mutual sense of commitment in the community, that as a parent, I'm going to, I'm going to enroll my kids in the schools here locally, I'm going to support them, because this is a community that cares about kids, and the infrastructure, and the wraparounds, they're all there. This is a place where, you know, everything is, all the deck is entirely stacked in favor of my child. When we all believe that, that's, that moment of collective belief in, in what we have in this community is essential to the success of the happening. We cannot, if parents walk around thinking, you know, I don't know, I don't know about the schools here, I don't know if this is the place to raise a kid, maybe I need to move to Davis and then come back, or whatever, then no, no amount of programs that we have will overcome that. And so, the most fundamental purpose for me of the home run is to break that cycle of disbelief and of despair, and to, and to really rally the whole community who wants to say, hey, we're all going to do this, right? We're all going to, we're all going to have our kids in local schools, and we're all going to, you know, every business is going to step up with an internship, not just me all by myself, and everyone's going to do this together, because that's what it's going to take. And so, that, to me, is a fundamental part of the theory of action, not simply that the programs themselves added together will lead to that, to that result. One nit on the theory of action, and I know you know this, and it's why you have the word "form" in it, but the completion of some form of post-secondary education, completion of, just completion of some post-secondary education is no better than completing no post-secondary education, if you don't complete a degree or a certificate, or a transfer and apprenticeship. And so, I think, you know, that it is, as we're driving towards what are, what is, what does future success look like for young people in our community, that really to emphasize the completion of a sheepskin, of a certificate, a degree, or apprenticeship, and not just some post-secondary education. And I think just, even though you know what that is, and that's why you wrote "form", I'm not sure it's entirely clear to the future yous and the future uses, that we're really driving towards that, that it's not, it's not a success of this program if somebody enrolls and takes, you know, three semesters of college and leaves with nothing except for debt whatsoever. In the design principles, I think similarly, so, if I only had one, it would be the, and this won't be a surprise, that it's a fully integrated system and not a sequence of individual entitlements, that, and to me, that partly translates into completion, success, and progress, right? It's not just that we're, that you go to preschool, you complete preschool and you progress to the next. You do the internship, and it's not that you just do an internship, you complete it, you succeed, and you progress to an apprenticeship, or to college, or to a, or a training program of some kind. And that is the essential element, because, you know, the, as we already know, because we all face this with this, with these initiatives all the time, is it, the translation of an individual entitlement as well, I didn't go to preschool, so city, you must have saved, you know, $200, can I have that in cash, or whatever? No, this is not about, this is not, this is not a program of a set of individual guarantee, of individual benefits to young people, one at a time. It is about making sure that they, and us, and our school, employer, partners are doing all the things connected to each other, integrated with another, sequenced with another, that will maximize, based on the research and evidence, maximize the likelihood that that young person's going to have a successful life, with all the opportunities and, and everything that they deserve, and by the chance to be middle-class by middle age, and to jump a social class, I mean, all those sorts of key, key variables are not met if we don't, if we don't apply the kind of rigorous, sometimes hard, choices around requirements for eligibility and what have you. So, I think that is, that cannot be stated strongly enough, because that's going to be the design principle that, for future councils that weren't here when this was designed, it's going to be the, it will be the, it'll be the easiest to overlook, because it's not natural. I mean, it's natural, because we're used to thinking about college in terms of scholarships, and so, I earned it, it's mine. No, it's part of this program, is, which is to, is to create a system of progress through economic, economic success in our community. The other design principle, I'm not, it might be here, but I didn't, I didn't see it, which is that we are, we are affirmatively trying to support local schools. And not by saying it's inappropriate to leave the city, or whatever, but, but we want people to make those choices because they have choices, not because they feel like they, like the only thing that, the only thing that they can do for their, for their child is to leave the city, right? We want, we want folks to have all the choices that are in front of them. And so, part of the design principle here, and you've already described what some of the eligibility requirements and other programmatic requirements do in terms of trying to lift up, you know, Washington Unified Kindergarten, or Washington Unified High Schools, or whatever, that that is, that is a design principle that's embedded here, but I didn't see it called out specifically as one of those, one of those principles, to create, to create an environment in which, which parents have the full, have the full sense of choice, yes, to leave, but also of the full choice, the full choice to stay in, in, in local schools. The data piece in the section as well, to me, at least, one of the principles that's, or maybe it's one of the sub-tactics, tactics, is that we should be working towards, this is not something for tomorrow, but we should be working towards a data architecture and system in which students and their families also have access and have clear, where we're identifying the clear benefits that they're getting out of the data as well. So, yes, the data is important for us, to make sure the right handoffs are happening, that the programs are working and doing what they're saying, but we also want to be developing a system in which there are direct benefits to students themselves, and I know, you know, you have some of these in mind, but to students themselves and to their families from the, from the data sharing also. Just to flip through a couple of other pieces of it, on the college savings account, and I guess what I want to mention now is a couple of just of items to be moving towards, because this, this feels like it's, not in the design principles, but in the definitions, features, and indicators sections, where these are descriptions of current reality, and so, I just want to, but they're not necessarily the end state that we're trying to get to, right? We're trying to, I mean, we're doing what we need to do to get the program launched effectively, but there are areas where, and you've already heard some, some other areas from my colleagues around, areas that we ought to be looking towards, but one of those on the college savings accounts piece is, is, you know, over time, adding in other forms of lifelong learning and workforce development, right? So that, you know, if there's a match for apprenticeship, or you get a full ride and a full scholarship to go to college. and a full scholarship to go to college, but you then, you know, four years later need to do a special, you know, training program in Python program or something that you have access to the, to those resources. A lot of those instruments don't yet exist and they're certainly not treated favorably from a tax perspective, but as a, that's definitely where the workforce economy and the gig economy and everything are taking us. And so kind of identifying that we're, that at some point we might, we move in that direction, I think would be useful. Similarly, on the integrated college and career pathway, you have the UC CSU A to G approved CTE courses. I think this is really valuable. However, I think, you know, and Councilmember Sandin has worked on this as well, that dual enrollment as a marker of integrated pathways is also, you know, an area to work, to move towards, where a student might take a course, or a set of courses at the community college that are also integrated, even if they're not themselves approved for UC CSU A to G. The other area that we have worked on in partly trying to get some of these grant sources is expanding the notion of internships to include entrepreneurships and other, other forms of career readiness that are not necessarily preparation for having a job in which you work for someone else, but are also around the gig economy and around entrepreneurship and others as well. We're not, we're nowhere near being able to do that yet and we would definitely want to have a grant to do that, but I also want you to have the ability, if we apply for a grant, to be able to say, yes, we, we have the authorization from us to do stuff like that in that space. I think you mentioned already the employee evaluations on the internship to get at the issue that Mr. Johannesen mentioned, and employer evaluations, excuse me, so that we are able to, you know, be able to report that, you know, the percentage of employers that rated the internship highly or said that they would, they would take another intern the year later, what's some marker that shows that employers themselves are placing value with that, value there. And then on the college, the college side of it, so in the answer to Councilmember Roscoe question, to me, that felt like a now issue as opposed to a policy issue because I had understood from the beginning that we were, we were intending that West Sacramento students who complete high school, whether or not they were in high school in Washington Unified would be, would be eligible for the promise if they went to the, you know, to participate in community college. But for the data reasons, we can't do that, we couldn't do that in year one, we can't do that in year two, it might be a couple of years out, but that is, there was no policy restriction. And Richmond had the same debate, I know, for example, but also ended up in the same place where there's no policy restriction that, that, that young people who graduate from, from any high school, if they're residents here, would be eligible for the, for the promise. So to me, I would, while I appreciated the answer to Councilmember Roscoe's question, I think that's, to me, that's the answer for now, but that we, we should continue to be working towards a data administrative system that would allow us to make sure that that guarantee, that the promise that we're making is available to a young person, whether they graduate from, from Christian Brothers or River City High School or anywhere else for the, for the community college. We, I know, in the, in talking about the promise, I often say that it's students who graduate from school, college-ready. I don't, I don't think we've, we've yet really captured that well and we don't need to have captured it well yet, but I still, it should still be on our list of design areas because, again, we, we have done actually not a horrible job in West Sacramento of sending young people to college. We just, our completion rates have been lower than they, they should be given the need for, for college degrees and certificates in the city. But our actual attendance, our access to college hasn't been horrible, but, so focusing on the completion side of it and the college readiness side of that, and there are various measures of doing that which we ought to be working towards, including in the, in the program as well. And then finally, the scope of the colleges themselves, I'm not focusing on the scholarship piece because I know we'll be back on that in much more detail later, you know, in a year or two, but on the scope of the promise itself, same thing. So we have the, right now, we're the West Sacramento campus, then we want to go Sacramento City College wide, maybe Los Rios wide, and then the world or whatever, but I don't know that, for me at least, the policy is that it would be just Sacramento City Colleges long run. I know Sacramento City, that's Sacramento City's college interest and right now, that's Los Rios District's interest as well, but I think over, over time, that a student who wants to go into a radiologic tech program or a nursing program that's only available at American River College, we want them to be able to access that program and to return to our community. And Sacramento, Los Rios has a set of programs that are intended to serve the whole district. And so SAC City is not allowed to offer programs in certain areas, certain high-cost areas that American River does. And so for this, for the promise to be complete, I think over the long run, we definitely should be moving towards having the promise extend to all of Los Rios and not just to the Sacramento City College campuses. So I know that was a lot of comments, there's a lot in here though, and as I said at the outset, I'm hoping that, you know, this conversation will allow you to, to run wild and keep, and keep making great stuff happen, so.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. I actually just had comments based on your comments and some of the other comments. You know, I reviewed the theory of action as well and specifically that the initiative will elevate the city now and in the future, making West Sacramento the best place to raise a family, access quality education and find talent. And then in your comments, Mr. Mayor, I heard you say we were looking for a mutual sense of commitment in our community as well as a system of progress through economic success in our own community. And part of the questions I had had to do with the fact that I did notice that a lot of the, the bases, they're related specifically to West Sacramento. We have children that have to attend a high-quality West SAC preschool, attend kindergarten and, you know, Washington Unified School District, attend high school in West Sacramento or be a resident of West Sacramento and then maybe attend a community college at a West Sacramento campus or in Sacramento, but needless to say, it's all very tied to West Sacramento. And I don't know if this is an additional design principle or a programmatic component or another way just doing outcomes measurement, but it just occurred to me that maybe, you know, we might consider being creative with another way of measuring outcomes, including the fact that, as you said, we don't want to encourage people to just leave West Sacramento, but what about the opportunity of, of having some type of incentive for people to come back to West Sacramento, whether that they come as a teacher or a firefighter or a police officer or a city employee or a business owner, someone who is actively contributing to the West Sacramento community? And the way to track those folks is to offer some type of loan or debt forgiveness for coming back and reinvesting their resources that they've accumulated over the continuum of services that they've enjoyed and then saying, okay, that's another way we measure whether or not the home run has worked because these folks have come back to give back. Just an additional comment.
All right. I don't know if it's here actually, and it relates to this completion, success, progress piece, and we talked about this on around the edges last, I think the last time we had this item up, is that the, this is an enormously ambitious program. It's the most ambitious one in the country as it is, even with only SAC City College, West Sacramento campus and only, you know, only with Washington Unified Kindergartens and so on and so forth. It's already the most ambitious in the country, but the only reason why we're able to afford it is because it is so tightly, it's so tightly designed around completion. And, you know, if we're writing, in some sense, writing a letter to the future and to ourselves, we do have to, and I think reminding ourselves that all the fiscal modeling is based on that. And I know when we've had, we've had debates and discussions about it here, we said, well, okay, what if it could just be preschools from everywhere or, you know, or what if we, what if we said it could be part-time? And all of the modeling that we've done to figure out what can we afford within the budget that the voters, you know, that is in Measure E, what can we afford, depends on those, those very strict eligibility requirements and definitions. And so figuring that, you know, figuring out how that's covered here, that one design principle is we need to live within, we need to live within the Measure E allocation and that we are not intending to encroach on the, on the non-Measure E general fund in order to fund this program because, and, you know, I'm from the world of education, so as Councilmember Sandin, we all went through it, and the others all have children and whatever, so we will all, we will want to, we want to do more and we, and hopefully we'll be able to as we get better and better at this. But I do think that the fiscal, the fiscal constraints around, around this are Measure E. It's a huge grant from the, from the citizens of this community essentially, but it's not unlimited as well. So as we, as we're able to assess, you know, going, you know, in future years, okay, we've achieved this, we've, or maybe the state has approved, you know, a college promise of its own or more money for local preschools or what have you, and then we're able to assess, you know, additional, you know, enhancements or modifications that will allow us to serve more and do better based on some of those, of those other revenues as well.
Can I just look, one more comment. Ian, I really appreciate what you put under the design principle, specifically making sure that DACA student data is protected. And I reiterate, Councilmember Sandin and I participated in a youth empowerment symposium a few months ago and heard firsthand from many of the students who expressed their tremendous trepidation, even approaching graduation, whether or not their family members would attend or whether or not they themselves would decide to walk across the stage because they feared that their personal information would be somehow leaked to enforcement agencies that would be to their detriment. So I appreciate your including that in this, in this document.
Great. All right, well, this is workshop only, so do you have sufficient?
I do.
Direction? All right. Thank you very much. Great work. All right, item 23 then is consideration of a smart city workshop. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. Good evening. The purpose of this report is to facilitate a council workshop about key concepts that you might want to see articulated in a draft smart city strategy that will be brought back to the council at a future date, so there's no action for, action item for this item either. I'd like to start by providing a brief background, then I'll summarize the contents of the report and then turn it over to the mayor to lead the council's discussion. Because the term gets used in so many ways, it's important, I think, to start a discussion about smart cities with a definition of the term, the way we're using it. So the definition that we're using is kind of a modified version of the way that the Smart Cities Council looks at smart cities, which is that a smart city uses information and communications technology and the tools of innovation, we added that part, to enhance its livability, workability and sustainability. And those terms are defined in the, in the staff report. Looked at from that standpoint, not in so many words, but the city for years has been working to become a smarter city. You look at the data analytics that we do now, the smart water meters, the online forums, the online payments, a lot of the ways we use technology today have, reflect a huge evolution over a period of time. So it's not, you know, working on smart cities now is, is less about a revelation in terms of the value of technology and more about just systematizing the understandings that we already have and kind of organizing that effort so we can be as effective as possible with that. There's a practically infinite array of technologies that span the work of every city department when it comes to, to smart cities. And even with Measure E in place, the amount of city resources that are available for those expenditures, for those kinds of projects is limited. So a key role for any smart city strategy is to help the council prioritize the expenditures that it's going to make in that space. And from that standpoint, as you sit down to look at a plan like this, it's tempting from a staff standpoint to put forward something like a technology capital improvement plan with, you know, projects and timelines and lists. But, you know, when you look at the rapid pace of technological change and the council's stated preference for retaining flexibility for your Measure E funds, we think that it makes more sense not to do that, but rather to put forward a set of principles and goals that can be used to create a framework that the council and the community can use to prioritize smart city expenditures rather than listing out individual ones. Your staff report includes a number of goals and principles that we believe would make sense as part of a smart city plan. The recommendations in the report were, excuse me, informed by the workshop that was held in February with the Smart Cities Council. We had a number of community members there, thought leaders, elected officials, appointed officials, working with the Smart Cities Council and a number of those ideas you'll see have, you know, found their way into these recommendations. And there's a summary report of that workshop attached to your staff report. I'll summarize the ideas that we're proposing briefly before I close my presentation. In your report, we're proposing four goals, and again, all these, all these ideas are not intended to be prescriptive, they're more just idea starters for the council's discussion. First goal would be safety and resilience, so the idea there would be to use smart technologies to make West Sacramento the safest city in the region or the state or the country. Connectivity, an idea there would be to collaborate with industry partners to bring affordable and high-speed internet service to every West Sacramento household and business and to promote technical literacy, which would have huge economic development impact. The third is service, using smart technologies and innovative management practices to deliver great service to the community. And the fourth would be transportation and mobility, the idea of which would be to use technology to enable new forms of affordable and reliable transportation to move West Sacramento residents around. So to implement those goals, we've got a number of principles, I'll go over those briefly that we're proposing. One is equity, so the concept there would be to make sure as the city implements its smart city strategy that, you know, underrepresented communities, just every, every different part of the community sees tangible benefits from the investments in smart technology that the city makes as opposed to necessarily focusing in one, in one area or the other. Next idea would be, a next principle would be efficiency and the notion there being to get, to achieve the goals that the city's looking for in the most efficient way possible, which may or may not be a technological improvement. We see that there are opportunities for, you know, low or no-tech solutions that can get to similar ends as the investment in technology and we want to take advantage of those. Third would be privacy. When you look at smart city technology, there's all manner of, you know, sensors and cameras and data and all kinds of, you know, really, really powerful, useful analytical tools, but it's important in using those that we guard the, the privacy of the data that we collect and the privacy of the West Sacramento residents, even as we're using the data to try and deliver better service to them. Fact-based and accountable would be the next one, the notion being that proposals for funding under the smart city program should be fact-based, they should be based on an actual business case that addresses a specific problem that the city is facing with some limited exceptions that I can discuss in a minute. And then last, the principle would be that the smart city approach should be universal in the sense that this is not a task analogous to, you know, wastewater management or, or something like that where it's a specific group of people that do it, but rather this is a practice that all city departments should be using to better, to deliver the services that they're responsible for in the city. And then finally, there's a number of key ideas that we list in the report, I won't go into them in great detail, but these are ideas that we think should be, should be, should show up somewhere in the, in the strategy. One is the importance of organizational context, so we view a smart city approach as not just a list, a technological to-do list, but also it should emphasize the importance of having a culture of innovation and, you know, creating opportunities for, you know, pilot projects and controlled failure and kind of some of those cultural aspects that will support the success of the technological innovations. We think with, with some exceptions, there's a, there's a concept people refer to as lead with the need that we think should at least be referenced in the plan, the notion being that, you know, generally speaking, there should be, you know, the technological investments and the smart city investments should be used as an accelerant to improve the city's response to a challenge or to a business case that it's facing as opposed to being made for their own sake. And there are some exceptions to that, certainly there should be a research and development function where sometimes we might just try something because it's interesting and it might lead to something in the future, or there might be, you know, a unique public relations opportunity or a grant that we get for something that we hadn't expected to try and do, but we can try it with someone else's money, so we might do that. So there are exceptions, but as a general principle, we would recommend a lead with the need approach. We think the timing of adoption of technology is important, so there are instances where, you know, we can foresee the city might want to be on the cutting edge of adopting a new technology and there are other instances where we might choose to be the fifth or sixth or 12th jurisdiction to adopt that technology so that other jurisdictions can make the mistakes and we can learn from their mistakes and then make a more prudent investment when we decide it's our moment. Another concept is the, having a balance of projects, so having some near-term smaller projects mixed in with some longer-term projects, so you get a nice, a nice flow of deliverables. Sequencing is a concept we think is important, so, you know, there are, there are some projects that are more foundational than others, so for example, maybe fiber infrastructure is something that should be looked at first because the, the sensors and other devices, you know, IoT devices that you might want to build out might rely on a fiber network that doesn't exist in a particular area yet, so there might be, you know, a sequencing consideration. Scale, as I mentioned, you know, we think there should be, there should be pilot projects and with STUR and other programs, we're already doing that, but in order for those projects to deliver the benefits that they ultimately promised to the community, we need to enhance our ability to bring those kind of projects to scale so they can, they can benefit everybody. And then finally, the notion of partnerships, which will be extremely important because, you know, we don't have in-house, we don't have the resources or the expertise necessarily to implement all of the different smart city strategies or plans that we would want to, but, you know, there's sort of a good and a bad to partnerships, so, you know, we want to look for the good ones, but avoid necessarily marrying ourselves to an individual technology or to a vendor and then having the market shift on us and then we're stuck with like the Betamax of smart city technology. So with all those things in mind, that's the, that's the end of my presentation. with all those things in mind, that's the end of my presentation. I want to listen to all your input. I will look to incorporate that into the document we bring back to you later.
Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, John, for the presentation and another good piece of work, you and your department. So, just going through this, there's a lot here. I know this is, you're looking just for general comments. But, on the goals, so one of the things about, you know, mentioning smart city and bringing in things that aren't technologically based, because I think there could be a danger there of really diluting what this is about. It's not smart business practices, or smart management practices, or smart, you know, things that we're doing already, but it's really the use of technology as a tool to for, to achieve certain objectives. So, I think it's really technologically based and looking for opportunities in technology. I think you're absolutely right that, you know, you want to be careful not to, be careful about technology, because technology for technology, say, you could end up with a Betamax and have a very expensive thing you're going to have to toss in a couple of years. But, in terms of the goals, I like the four goals that you have here. But, you know, I think when you look at this document, it's going to be a framework, if not particularly an implementation. You know, it's straight capital, it's not going to show up in a capital improvement program at this point. So, it's kind of like, you know, going back to the edge-friendly plan, what we did is we had these domains that we basically identified. And I find that useful, because whenever we look at any kind of city issue, city process, we have a punch list of, okay, so, edge-friendly, how does this meet that? Smart city, how does it meet that? So, you're basically, it's part of the thought process of what are the opportunities you take technology in this particular aspect of what we're doing, whether it's building permits, or, you know, some type of interaction with the community. So, how can we do this that technology could help? And then it gets to the point of, you know, exactly what kind of technology are we going to use? Are we going to adopt open source or some proprietary type issue? So, quality, you know, quality of life should be one of those, I think. How does this particular, because you're looking at use cases. So, how does this, whatever you do, and how's it improve the quality of life of people that are here? How does it create a more efficient use of government resources? So, there's that whole efficiency in interdepartmental communications, or, you know, permitting process that you can skip a couple of different steps and not have one additional staff reviewing these things, save money doing that. How does it improve economic development or attract businesses? So, the extent we have a policy of, you know, data collection, open source data, high-speed internet, it makes it more attractive for folks to want to operate business here that rely on that. Let's see, and then down onto the guiding principles, I think you need to put data in here, because data is very, I think it's very important that we set a policy that we own the data, or we strive to own our data, because I think the future is going to be in data aggregation and decision-based modeling based on data. And we don't want to be in a position where we're having to buy that data. So, it's not only owning our own data to make sure there's intercompatibility with the data sets that we're collecting. I like the key ideas. This exception to lead with the need, I think it's good that we're looking at unique opportunities. We have to be kind of grounded, so we're not spending money needlessly. But, in order to create the optimism for the innovative spirit, to maybe look at projects that may not particularly have a huge benefit, but they could have incremental benefit in terms of knowledge, that it may form a piece of a bigger project that you can see, well, this technology's not really working, it's not giving what, and it's very, a low economic bar to get into that, just to see if it works, see what's produced. And if it's not working, then there's other technology you can use. You know, and you're starting then to build more in-house capabilities on this, rather than have to hire. I mean, you've got a lot now, because you've been dealing with this for so long, and I know some of your staff do too. But, you know, it needs to be a learning experience for your staff as well. So, I think those are, in general, my goals. I, you know, viewing this technology as an information tool only, and again, just to find a way to have some type of framework, and when we go through our decisions, we can look, you know, is this something technology can help? And if it can help, what goals would it meet? And if there is a use case that you can see, to use that as maybe an example of how to slowly implement technology there.
Okay. So, if I could jump in now, because we've been working on this the most together, I agree. Also, just as, you know, we're talking about a couple or a few hundred thousand dollars. And so, the level of bureaucratic mindset that we bring to that needs to be appropriately scaled, right? We're not, this is not, it's not how are we going to spend 90% of the general fund. This is a very tiny amount of money. And so, we shouldn't be overbuilding a set of frameworks and policies and risk assessments and prioritization schemes and algorithms in order to assess that, especially not in this space. So, I definitely agree on the technology lens. And even within technology, I mean, smart cities are really even more specifically, you know, it is solutions that integrate sensing, connectivity, data, that lead to better personalization, customization, better experience for the users. Right? There are domains of smart cities that are more than just how do we do something different or better than before, that are central, they're central to that. I still think this is, the best use of this is as more like, it's a maker's space. This is our, more like sidewalk labs or bell labs, a little bit of fun, actually, R&amp;D lab. And you don't run an R&amp;D lab only by saying, what are our top five most difficult challenges that we've been struggling with for 50 years that are almost impossible to deal with? Now, R&amp;D folks, with $18, go solve that. You cannot run a lab that way, right? You say, here's, you know, here's some test tubes, here's some circuits. Go make stuff. Go try things. And see what catches. See what's out there that is, we don't already see, right? If we already could, if we already knew what was in the technology landscape, in order to say, here are the top, you know, top 18 priorities ranked in order of priority. If we already had that level of knowledge, we wouldn't need to be doing this. We would just be doing smart cities as part of our regular daily work. And we are to some extent. But, these funds are really to deal with that, what's beyond the edge horizon of what we already know. And so, bringing it back to us to say, what are the priorities at the staff level or at the council level, to me, to some extent defeats the purpose. So, the, you know, the kind of, I like the report in the broad brush areas, kind of like the last one. But, when you get down to the details, I think, like, we're already moving towards things that are both out of scale for the dollars that we have, and are not necessarily at all related to what the supply side is. Like, where are the solutions out there? Not just what are our needs, which I feel like this really focuses on. So, you know, so, you know, saying that we want to expand recycled water program, well, that's a very specific thing, and we want to do that by better managing stormwater. Well, there may be a lot of better ways for us to reduce our water footprint, or, you know, if that's our real challenge, our challenge is at this level, not at the set of strategies that we wanted to do anyway. But, maybe could you put it on a smartphone app? That's not likely to produce real results in that space. The other domain of that is that, or the other dimension of that is that, yes, it's about what are high priority problems or challenges or opportunities, but also, like, what's the depth of impact that you can have? Right? So, you know, we've been talking, Mr. Johansson and I have been talking, and I think you have as well, about, you know, algorithmic approaches to zoning and permitting. You know, so, could, you know, whereas if you could, if you could, if somebody had, you know, the technology by which to completely encode our code, essentially, our zoning code, and encode it in a way that, without a counter visit, you could have everything done by an algorithm, then that's a huge benefit to, you know, folks who are adding something onto their house, or a small business owner wanting to figure out whether ice cream, you know, how much space is needed, whatever those questions are. If you can't get to that level, if you can achieve that big impact in an area that would not show up as one of our top, you know, top three things, the three most difficult things plaguing us in life, if you could achieve that, though, the impact in terms of positive benefit for us and for, you know, certain residents and businesses in our community could be enormous. And so, the, kind of the transformative impact, the depth of the impact, to me, is just as important as what the, you know, whether or not it happens to be in one of the top three most problematic domains. So, I just, I would encourage you to think about how this can be a little bit more playful, essentially, in the way that we approach smart cities, as opposed to yet another, you know, drudgery, 10-page form that we have to fill out to demonstrate that, you know, that this algorithmic zoning code is appropriately going to serve, you know, people in every single neighborhood and every age group and whatever, which it's not. I mean, we talked about this a lot with the mobility alternatives, that when we're talking about innovation, the innovation space, insisting at the front end that all of our social policies being incorporated into every single innovation will necessarily kill all innovation. There's no innovation in history that has been able to achieve that. And it's our nature. But, I think it's really important for us to avoid that. So, this kind of more playful smart cities approach, to me, would also mobilize the champions that already exist, or who are willing to step up inside City Hall and among our partners. So, rather than necessarily say, we must have a program in which every department is doing a smart cities thing, and it needs to be in these domains, just say, hey, you know, we're going to have a rapid response portion of these resources, and, you know, it's up to $15,000. And if you have a great idea, and we got a, you know, there's an internal, your innovation team looks at that idea and says, good, go, right? And we find a partner that's willing to, like, as we have in several spaces, whether it's VIA or JUMP, or ZenCity, or others, where folks who, our best opportunities in this market, since we're not Chicago, or Boston, or LA, are when somebody is just starting off with their first idea, and they need to find some cities that have credibility and have a national reputation to get started in. That's where we thrive financially, because they're like, well, we'll do it for almost nothing, or at a huge discount, just for you, West Sac, because we know if we can get it to work in West Sac, we can start to make it work everywhere else and sell it everywhere else. That's our best bet. In Chicago, they have a different set of assets. But, for us, that's what we've got. And that, so that means we can't be the kind of city for a lot of these, where we say, well, you know, call us when you have 25 cities. Because when you have 25 cities, the cost is going to be 10 or 100 times more than we can afford. So, you know, inhabiting that edge space, uncomfortable as though that is, I think it's really important in order for us to take advantage of what we have as a small city in that space. And it doesn't necessarily mean every penny needs to be spent in that way. But, I think really embracing that, not as like, okay, there's a little bit of money left over for that. But, that's really, to me, that's the center line of this work, is in these edge cases. The exceptions, I think, would be the ones that were articulated in Measure E itself, where we do need to have an affirmative strategy. And that is mobility, which we do, access to the internet, to high-speed broadband, which we have a strategy on, but we got to keep work on that, civic engagement, and age-friendly. I think those were the areas in this portion of Measure E. And so, those areas, we ought to be sure that we're doing things to advance those goals. Again, I wouldn't, since we're not talking about even half a million dollars, I wouldn't be developing some gigantic plan with a whole bunch of parameters and forms and everything else. But, we ought to be doing, we ought to be making sure that part of our program is focused in those four areas. But, beyond that, I think, I really, I feel like a more laboratory, R&amp;D lab format will be less hassle and work for you, more fun for the community. It will produce the kind of solutions, like VIA rideshare two years ago was not in our horizon of even something that was possible. Neither was electric bike share. And today, they're two of the most popular things in the city, and most widely used. But, they wouldn't have made it on a list two years ago of, you know, things that we think you can solve with technology. They just wouldn't have. And here they are. So, having a little more, having a lot of humility about what's out there, and letting some of the innovators and the crazy, and the hackers and other people make things that we can then say, yeah, that could be cool. We'll try, for $12,000, I'll try that one. Or, for the money I've already got for the Parks and Trails Master Plan, I'll throw in 25K, and John, if you'll give me 5K out of the smart city fund. We ought to be looking for those kind of opportunities and promoting folks inside City Hall and among our partners that want to run with their ideas. Councilmember Sandin, you're jumping.
Oh, well, I just, I think I may have a more pragmatic approach. I keep going back to our general plan and thinking about how we have, how we take the smart city principles. And I was able to go to that readiness workshop. How do we take the principles, and how do we kind of activate things that we want to achieve? How do we make the city smarter in all these different ways? And how do we take the technology, just to move, just to kind of achieve our goals, what we've laid out for ourselves? So, that was, my thought was how the alignment with the general plan, and maybe coming up with, again, thinking creatively about what the possibilities are, but using that frame to kind of possibly use that frame.
Yeah, I don't, I actually, I think, I have the same basic view, which is there ought to be, the general plan is the North Star, like, we're here, and so, the general plan identified on the mobility space, the kinds of things that VIA and JUMP do. But, it did not presume that we would identify, you know, here's, there is a technological solution that, let's go procure that thing necessarily. So, I think the general plan's actually a great way to define what the R&amp;D lab, what the playground is all about. The general plan and age-friendly and the other, you know, the other, the mobility action plan and the other associated pieces.
Yeah, just a quick comment. And I appreciate you and Councilmember Johansson's comments, because you guys have spent a lot of time on this. And I'm sitting here making some notes about how to add to your framework. So, I'm getting caught into the trap as well in terms of, I get where you're going, what we're trying to create, so everyone understands the field we're playing in, and things we're worried about. And these are things to worry about. But, what caught my ear is, but I was kind of, I was on the plane today trying to understand, what are we missing in here? I think Councilmember Johansson had it right, which is a principle or a goal around quality of life, right? And I think that plays into the opportunistic element that we have. It isn't a lot of money to play with, and we're probably spending way too much time talking about form than the actual substance of what we're trying to do. And I think that's kind of the overriding theme. If it's anything that you or staff come across that's going to help make the team across City Hall, their work a little easier, that results in a permit being issued faster, or our ability to address potholes faster, or like we did in ZenCity, those types of things matter. And I don't want it to be stifled in, like, do we follow the right route? I think that's what you're getting at, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate, because I'm falling into the trap too, as I do, in terms of how can I contribute to this. So, I'll just, that quality, that goal that Mr. Johansson brought up is kind of what I was searching for today. It's like, it needs to lead to something, it doesn't have to be major, or it's just, as long, that should be the goal, how can we make everyone's life a little better? And if it lands on the communities, like VIA is a way to make somebody's life just a little better, and it has, then that's what we should be striving for. That's the mission of this, and being opportunistic. I will say, and this is where I will put on the hat, because it's in your guiding principles, and I can't help myself, says, you have it on privacy, and it just, we need to make sure we're managing risk, right? Is that we're playing with data? And we all know that it's coming in a more and more complicated world when we do that. So, I appreciate your comments here on the privacy part. And so, we just had to have that lens on around managing the risk around when we work with data, and we work with open source systems, and all those things. And procedurally, who has it? And I think we probably have it in our IT policies and whatever else around managing risk. We just need, I would encourage you to kind of make sure that's an underlying principle throughout and including here. But, other than that, like, this is the $100,000, $200,000 we have that, yeah, if we come across an opportunity to make something a little better, you should be just like, okay, that makes sense. We should do it.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robinson.
All right. Council calendar, Alexa?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Our next council meeting is not until August 22nd, so here's some events that are coming up in between. July, this past Monday, July 16th, the candidate filing period opened for city council and mayor, and that runs through August 10th. On July 25th, next Wednesday, we have the Youth Fire Academy graduation. That's at 5:30 in the Galleria. July 28th, Saturday, is the Second Summer Night Lights, and that will be at Memorial Park. On August 2nd is the State of the County Address, which is a luncheon. And we just sent an email out to all of you to see if you wanted us to get your tickets for that, so let us know. And then August 4th, in the Washington District, is the Public Art Event. And then August 4th, in the Washington District, is the Public Art Event at the Fifth and Sea Garage, that is from 11:00 to 4:00 PM. And then August 11th is the Third Summer Night Lights, and that's at Riverbank Elementary.
Question on the calendar. All right, City Manager Report?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one item of note, and a few other updates. So you may have noticed that tonight, we didn't have a monthly update on the VIA program. The reason for that is the last council meeting, it was June 27th, there's a short lead time up to this meeting, but I did get an update from Sarah and Denix. Not a lot of new information from the last one, but we're on the cusp of averaging about 1,000 riders per week. The most popular destinations still continue to be the major shopping centers, and roughly 90 riders have applied for, received the senior or disabled rider discount. So there will be a regular update, we'll resume the monthly updates on August 22nd. I know one item of importance to the council is data on shared rides, so we're hoping to get from VIA that information, and we'll incorporate that in the next update, so that'll be in August. And then also, I think we still have some Summer Steps interns in attendance, you could just stand up. This is the last meeting where they just won, so you get an extra badge for that. But this is the last meeting where they could attend, a lot of them have been at other meetings or watching, so it's been another great summer with the interns. And then one other thing I wanted to just publicly announce, Katie Jacobson, I think she may have left. Katie Jacobson is our new Director of Economic Development and Housing. I know the council and a lot of staff have already heard that news, but she'll be officially starting on Monday. And then lastly, as I mentioned to council and rendered to everyone, I'll be off the grid tomorrow and Friday, so Amanda Berlin will be in charge, so thank you.
All right, question for the City Manager Report. Mr. Johansson?
Just a quick, so on the VIA issue, you know, one thing we might want to consider too, is we have an election coming up, midterm election, and it may be something that VIA might be able to help in terms of helping people get to polls, maybe will help promote that as well, so.
All right, yeah, we'll make a note of that for the staff.
All right, City Attorney Report?
Nothing to report.
All right, Staff Direction for members of the council? We have no future agenda requests. Mr. Johansson moves, and I'll second. Mayor Protem Ladesma seconds, the meeting adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, turning down motion carries, meeting is adjourned.